We put the map up there. I don't know if anyone has any questions now as far as what, just what the boundaries may be. Kevin, you might want to, you know, put that, the map up again, just in case people are not clear when we're talking about, you know, changing, taking some of the I-5, putting in the IX, and then taking some of the IX into the new watershed. So, I always say, just take a quick look at the map, if, you know, if the public has any specific questions, or if they're looking at just a specific property and want to know where that may or may not fall.
And I think just something to keep in mind is, when we were looking at this task of trying to balance the protection of water quality, as well as permitted uses in certain zones in this area that could be, you know, really helpful, be so close to I-91, something we, you know, previously, it was looking at modifying the existing IX zone with the same boundaries, and the existing I-5 zone with the same boundaries. But that ended up, when you restricted uses in, say, the IX, in order to protect the water quality, that ended up affecting all of this other land that really wasn't draining to the Mackenzie Reservoir, wasn't part of the watershed protection overlay district. So, in order to not create a burden on those other parcels, we wanted to separate these zones out, which is why we created this new watershed interchange district. So, I hope that kind of frames, you know, I know it's like, kind of, it's a big change, but it's really the best way that we could properly define uses, and make sure that we're not unfairly restricting properties that aren't draining to the Mackenzie Reservoir.
Yes, sir.
I'm Ron Maturro. I live on 1009 North Farms Road. Behind me is Walt Wobisky's farm, and on the side of me, I have his, an old house sitting there, a barn, a silo. I want to know, someone tried to tell me they're going to knock that all down, and clear it out, and just have vacant land, and I want to know what's going on behind me. Someone's trying to tell me, from my border, boundary line in the back, they're going to go 300 feet back and start the project. That's bogus.
Well, sir, it's like, I don't mean to cut you off, but we're, we're not discussing, we're, we're looking at the regulations right now.
Oh, well, let's...
You know, I, I think that's where we want to focus on now. I think we want to stay kind of on track as far as, you know, what we're...
Well, okay, that map you had up, I want to see where I am on that.
Oh, okay. Could you put the map up, please?
All right, where is North Farms Road?
North Farms is right here.
Oh, right there, huh?
Yes.
And what's in white?
White is RU-40.
And what's that going to be?
A residential zone, no changes.
So, up there where it's pink, or whatever color that is?
The purple, that's, that's the current IX zone, and it will say the IX zone.
Yes.
And when that's IX zone, what's that mean? What, what are they going to do to that zone? What are they going to put in?
I think we're going to be getting to that, sir, because that's where the next thing we're going to be talking about is the IX zone, and we're going to be talking about what the approved uses are going to be. Why don't we start with the, with the IX?
Okay. So, we're going to pull up the proposed zoning language for IX, so if anybody has questions, or, um, you know, comments, ways that we can better refine, or define anything, we greatly appreciate that.
So, anything that's in red are the changes. Um, we just got rid of some of the extra language on the IX zone. Um, everything that's in black is what's existing in the IX zone currently.
So, these are the uses that are allowed with site plan approval. Um, so, anything, like Kevin just said, anything in black. So, before, printing and publishing was allowed, it's still allowed with our proposed, our proposed regulations. So, you can see that we're, you know, adding in warehouse and distribution general, and warehousing and distribution limited.
Which we defined, go back and discuss definitions, if you would like.
Does anybody have questions on the uses?
I have a procedure of question. Mr. Chairman, I'll be going the way the commissioners ask first, and then public. Probably easier, because you guys probably will ask more substance than...
That's what I'd like to do, is I've mentioned this early on, you know, present this, and then we ask commission members for comments, and then we'll, you know, ask the public.
So, do any commissioners have questions or comments on uses for the site plan approval, or do you ask to keep going through?
I'll, I'll ask the question, uh, which I refrained from, from our last planning in zoning. We specified just warehousing, and took that as definition to include distribution and delivery centers. Why are we changing that now, when we had a legal opinion that that fit under the warehouse definition?
Because we wanted to, during discussions, we wanted to define different warehouse definitions. Uh, we felt that it was, the proposal for the Amazon facility was a different, uh, you know, type of use than this way warehouse would be.
And if I may, and really, the, the stem of it all is, when we were looking at WI, I'll jump ahead a little bit, but, um, the general idea behind that zone is allowing uses with limited parking areas. So, uses that wouldn't have expansive parking lots, like what we do see with last mile delivery centers. So, we wanted to make sure that was defined separately, so we could specifically allow it in zone IX, where it's appropriate, and not allow it in zone WI. Does that make sense?
Well, you, you, you just threw in another definition, last mile delivery centers.
You'll start with the definition center?
Yeah.
Or call it parcel sorting and retail distribution. So, fulfillment center, parcel hub, or similar facility used for the storage, processing, distribution, or redistribution of parcels or products in delivery to retail consumers and other end users by means of vehicles with a gross weight not to exceed 26,000 pounds. So, that would be a typical last mile delivery center.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions on the definitions?
Yeah, I have, the difference between, and I think I'm just, but, you know, manufacturing, manufacturing general and manufacturing light, if you can just kind of give me the cliff notes as far as the major differences. What...
Essentially, general manufacturing is more, uh, I guess, you know, more higher intensity of paper manufacturing, wood product manufacturing, plastics, rubber products, more, uh, with chemical based, would you say?
Yeah, so, with light manufacturing, you wouldn't be producing any materials onsite. You'd be taking parts that are already made and putting them together. So, it wouldn't be...
For, for general, you, you're saying you're taking, you have raw material, which you're doing. We're here, you're taking a light manufacturing, something that's already been processed to some degree, and then it's a component that you're, that you're adding to make something else. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Heine, will go to Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do have a couple questions and comments, I think. Um, so, if we scroll down to parcel, parcel sorting and retail distribution, um, that definition seems to be based upon, um, a retail component. Um, but then, when, if you scroll down to warehousing and distribution, both general and limited, it seems like the distinction that we're making is the parcel sorting and retail, the, with parcel sorting and retail distribution, the focus is on retail, whereas the warehousing and distribution, general and limited, is focused on wholesale distribution.
Correct.
So, I, I think in the titles of warehousing and distribution, you should use the word wholesale, just like you did in the prior section, parcel sorting and retail distribution, warehousing and wholesale distribution, general and limited. So that you have that in the title, and it makes it clearer as to what the focus is. Then, on both of the, both the warehousing definitions, if you take a look at the beginning, just the first two words on each definition, you have a use for general, and then a facility for limited. That should be consistent, either a use for a facility on both, but, you know, that's inconsistent the way it is right now.
Thank you.
The other question I had was with respect to warehousing and wholesale, the, the limited definition for warehousing and distribution, um, it seems like, you know, I went through everything, and it looks like the only differences between the two is that with the general definition, it includes freight and trucking terminals.
Correct.
Um, and then the limited has to be indoors.
Correct.
Or enclosed. I mean, you know, with the limited definition, can't you, can't you just say something like, um, all, uh, all uses that would qualify as a warehousing and, and wholesale distribution, general use, except for freight and trucking terminals that are conducted, um, or such uses must be conducted indoors, or exclusively within an enclosed structure? Um, it seems, it would just, I think...
Make it less redundant.
Make it less redundant and clearer.
Right.
Um, that's just my, my thoughts on it. Um, and then, my own, my last comment is that with respect to the parcel sorting and retail distribution, you actually make reference to a gross weight.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, you want to do the same thing for warehousing and distribution definitions? Because it seems like what you're looking for is, is you don't want those small little vans from...
So, like a minimum gross weight?
Yeah.
Gotcha, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any comments?
Is that it, James?
That's it, thank you, Mr.
I think, Mr. Allison, do you have any question or two?
Um, yeah, it was actually, Mr. Heine kind of covered the majority of them. It was, uh, the general unlimited warehousing. Um, it's just, there's a lot of overlap and, and overlay where I think it can get confusing when you start separating, you know, one district allowing general for a site plan, and limited for a site plan, and another district saying, we're only going to allow limited for a site plan, and the, in general, would be special permit.
Right.
That, it, it gets kind of confusing as to what type of a business would be allowed. And I, I just think that we would want any developer, or any company that would be looking at a, at a parcel to be able to look at the regs and know right off the bat. So, it's just, it's just a little bit confusing, a little bit wordy, as far as whether it would apply. Um, and I think with a lot of Mr. Heine's suggestions, it might clean it up.
Yeah.
But, um, I'd like to see the language and maybe readdress, readdress it, to get it kind of clear and concise. But, that's, that's all I have to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Okay, at this point in time, are there any members of the public? Uh, we'll start with this gentleman, and then we'll work our way back.
Uh, Tim Wolf, a member of the Economic Development Commission. This is the response of the manufacturing light and general. That classification with the state is strictly manufacturing. If we have somebody that doesn't make any parts, they just assemble a product here, there's still a manufacturing. The state will not distinguish between somebody that assembles and somebody that actually builds the parts. And that's why that was broken down like that.
Thank you. Thank this gentleman.
Uh, Fox and Mayo, 14 Murray Lane. Um, first, I think this is a great, a great step, putting these definitions out that you guys are doing, and it's going to help long term. But, relative to the definitions, just to make this real, if we think about North Haven, the big Amazon 800,000 square foot facility, that trucks come in, goods there, trucks go out to one of those parcel sorting facilities, what do we call that in these definitions?
Warehousing distribution general.
Maybe, I believe it would be warehousing and distribution in general, because it would be defined as a freight terminal.
Right. It just, I think it's something we should be, like, real certain of, because they're not going the way, right?
Absolutely.
And then, the other question I had was around, or two other really good questions. Something that they call cross stock load, which is, you know, trucks come in, their kind of stuff is there, product for less than 24 hours, and kind of go out the other side. Truck goes to another truck, they're not banned, usually they're not banned, but I'm not fully sure. But, you know, that's something that I think we should bear up, where that slots. I have no idea where it slots.
Yeah, that would basically be the same. I think that the suggestion of a minimum gross weight vehicle would help a lot with that. So, that would, again, put it into the warehousing and distribution general.
And then, my, just, that's, my last question was, we seem to be silent on self-storage or warehousing, in fact, deliberate, or, um, there was some previous drafts where stuff was starting to come in, and I don't see it.
Well, right now, it's under, it's a lot of other storage warehouses, so, I want to maybe look at that as well.
We'll make sure it has a home, for sure.
I'm not sure what to ask the question yet. Are we just going step by step from the different sections now?
Yeah, that's what we're...
Well, then, I'll wait till the gentleman part now.
Okay, good. Uh, yes, yes.
Um, so, I guess, staying on the definitions, if I may just read real fast and ask questions later. Manufacturing general, uh, the manufacture of products when extracted for raw materials or recycled, or secondary materials, including bulk storage and handling of such products and materials, includes operations such as agricultural processing, apparel manufacturing, photographic processing plants, leather and light product manufacturing, wood product manufacturing, paper manufacturing, chemical manufacturing, plastics and rubber products manufacturing, non-metallic mineral product manufacturing, primary metal manufacturing. Can I have an example, please, Mr. Pugini, of a primary metal manufacturing, fabricated metal product manufacturing, automotive and heavy equipment manufacturing? I'm looking for examples, because, again, back, we are talking about the IX zones. If we can have, um, a map up that was in the beginning, it is about in, um, the North Farms and Tankwood area. On one side, about in land trust. On the other, it abouts big residential neighborhoods. Again, here are 18, you show only 30 houses in Tankwood. We have a huge married neighborhood behind us. Um, and on one side, there are light industrial users as well, including parks and parks, for example. I just have a lot of difficulties picturing something as primary metal manufacturing, from raw materials or recycled. Um, to me, I've been in steel business all my life. I picture blast furnace, or EAF-based steel mill, developed well. How is this different from New Core, or Ulbr Steel, that we have in I-20 and I-40? How is that compatible with the neighborhood, and with the light? How is it compatible with the whole IX zone? Because we know how it came to be. 25, 30 years ago, the town wanted to develop, looking for commercial opportunities, created IX zones. Um, the neighborhoods were already there before any IX, before any rezoning. And so, the language of IX as it stands now is a very gentle language. It allows very limited uses. Um, allowing this heavy industry uses, to me, is not really clarification. It, it looks like rezoning. It completely changes what can go in. And not only, it is a dramatic intensification of the industrial use, which, again, commissioners know better. I don't have a background in that area, but to me, it's completely incompatible with both the language of the regulation as it stood before, with the neighborhood, with the practical uses that are already present. Not only this, um, manufacture of products extracted or raw materials, and primary metal manufacturing, and automotive manufacturing, not only this all gets allowed now, it's only, it's allowed by rights, not even special permit. This is extensive, dramatic increase, and expansion of the possible uses in a zone. And I think, uh, we're talking about definitions right now, but this is how I read it, and I guess, my question for commissioner, is it just my impression, or this is a nature change? It's a drastic change to that zone as it stands. And appropriateness of all of those uses should be looked into very, very seriously.
I guess I'd just have...
Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you very much. I guess I'd ask...
Yeah, so...
...as far as they like to just address it.
Yeah.
To some degree, certainly, we may have further comments and further discussion on it. So, I want, you know, I want to point out that we're not looking tonight to finalize anything. Uh, you know, what we're looking for right now is input from the public. I fully expect that we'll have at least one, and probably another workshop on that. So, certainly, the issues that the public are raising, certainly, we're, we're interested in hearing that, and looking to look at that further. I guess I'd ask for a stat.
If I may just add one sentence to, um, the intensification of industrial use as proposed here will degrade the whole neighbor. The impairment to the property...
Yeah, I think you've already, yeah, I think you've already made that point, though. I, I don't mean to cut you off, but...
No, sure.
We're just, we're just beginning.
So, currently, the, um, IX zone does have allowed uses, and one of those uses is manufacturing. Um, so, basically, the, the definition before, we're, we're broadening it. We're not broadening, we're making it more specific.
Yeah.
So, where, if somebody comes in with any of those uses that we list today, before, you know, any changes are made to the regs, they would be in allowed as a bright use in zone IX, right now, yeah, today. So, now, when these go forward, if they go forward, then they would have to specifically point to one of the ones that we listed. If it's anything outside of that, it would then not be in allowed use. So, today, it's really not changing it or making it worse, because any of those items that were listed, any of those uses that were listed, the specific types of manufacturing, are currently allowed in zone IX.
Correct.
What's the difference between IX, and I-20, and I-40 then? What's the difference between expansion, which is in the middle of the residential neighborhood, and the true industrial zones that will...
True industrial zones, well, like bulk storage of petroleum, and things of that. I don't have off the top of my head all the uses in the I-40 and I-20, but I don't know if someone had a, an idea, a copy of the regs on that. You can certainly look in there. Be more like bulk storage uses, more, uh, higher intensity industrial uses, rather than manufacturing. But, anyway, as of right now, those uses are allowed, so we wanted to define them out more specifically, and take them out of the watershed interchange district. But, no, it's a good point to bring up, and I can understand.
This is a question I should ask now. What I'm concerned about...
My name and address, sir.
Ronnie Maturro, 1009 North Farms Road. The question's, I don't know if it's the time to ask for it, is, if you're putting in driveways and buildings, you're going to have runoff water.
We're talking, sir, we're talking about definitions right now, so...
Well, if that's not part of that...
Yeah, this would not be...
Oh, okay, yeah, all right, okay, fine.
But we'll get to it. Yes, this gentleman, uh, next time. Okay. Anyone else? And I see no one raising their hand.
I got a question.
Yes, gentlemen.
Coast over 1038 North Farms. What was a zone before than what changed now? For example, you have the IX. What was a zone before? Wasn't that an IX already?
It's already IX. This is not changing. This area here is not changing whatsoever. It's just, this area inside the watershed is changing. So, none of this is changing at all from what it currently is, except for those proposed text changes and definitions like that. So, none of the actual matter is changing in that district. It's just, we've taken, all of this used to be IX, so that's why it says proposed zone IX, because all of this was IX here, and then this was I-5. But, this area here is not changing at all. Kind of looked at this already, um, like I said, we, anything in black is what's already existing. Uh, so, the only uses we added was we, you know, we take the definitions as, as we just spoke about, uh, warehousing, just use the general, limited, um, and then manufacturing, general, manufacturing light. We just wanted to break up the uses, because I believe right now, manufacturing is allowed just as a whole. So, and we added veterinary facilities. Uh, this is the data center language that would be required for special permit, and the parcel sorting and retail distribution, just like this.
Kevin, perhaps if you could just need to get a high level for the, for the data center, because I'm, certainly, most individuals may not have a, you know, a copy of this, so just kind of a high level on that.
Okay. I could explain it if you want. Um, so, any data center that would be proposed, so, this GOT space proposal that I know you're all probably here for, uh, has to adhere to the town municipal host agreement, which I do not have on me. But, that, that requires a certain amount of setbacks and a noise study itself. But, these would be, uh, in addition to that agreement, and these are more for data centers, that would be, in the future, say, smaller scale data centers, not, uh, not that GOT space proposal allows in front of the town council. Uh, so, you'd have to submit a sound and vibration impact analysis, and this would have to contain information concerning all activity, equipment, and machinery associated with the use, and that's also during construction of the proposal. Uh, any sound and vibration levels resulted from such activity, equipment, or machinery, as well as all measures, including but not limited, limited to those of structural and or non-structural related nature, necessary to mitigate noise and vibration, and to ensure that the noise to be emitted from the proposed development does not substantially raise the established baseline environment's noise level, emit harmful sounds, even infrasounds. So, sound that can make you sick, even though you can't hear it necessarily, and, uh, or create vibration levels to a degree that adversely affect the neighboring properties. Um, and then, if the commission determines that peer review of the noise and vibration impact analysis warranted, the advocate will be required to pay the town for the cost of the peer review. Um, and it, so it has to establish an environmental baseline using ambient noise and existing conditions. So, they have to go out there, they have to, uh, submit, I believe it's, uh, two weeks of, uh, testing to get the existing noise level. Um, and then, seasonal scenarios and hours of the proposed use shall also be considered during the analysis. Uh, and then, B, it talks about screening up mechanical equipment so in order to minimize visibility from the adjacent roads and properties. Ground level and rooftop mechanical equipment shall be screened. Uh, the screening may be provided by a principal building. Mechanical equipment not screened by a principal building shall be screened by a visually solid fence, screen wall, or parapet wall, or other visually solid screen. They shall be destructive materials compatible with those used in the exterior construction of a principal building. Um, notwithstanding the requirements of the section, mechanical equipment located in a manner found to have no adverse impact on adjacent roads and adjacent properties, shall not be required to be screened as determined by the commission. Uh, so, in addition to the requirements of section 6.14, which are the currently existing landscaping requirements, in section 4.9, F3, which was... Which was the, so there's special requirements there for landscaping, for the required front yard. Uh, so, any, where any side rear, uh, we're changing this language slightly, we just made that modification. We're going to change that to residential zoning district, not a non-industrial zoning district. Um, so, the minimum side and rear setbacks shall be dictated by the sound and vibration impact analysis, and shall in no case be less than 150 feet. Shall include a 100-foot wide landscape or natural open space buffer within earth and burnery, six feet in height, and a ground distance to preserve it. Um, as you can see, and I just wanted to say that right now, the current setbacks in the IX for any other type of use is only 70 feet. Uh, so, we're requiring a minimum of 150 feet for even smaller scale data centers. Um, so, if, you know, if it's a large scale project, like the GOT space project has to be, uh, is dictated by the town council agreement, so that's, I believe it's 350 feet from residential. Uh, so, this would require, so, these requirements for the GOT space projects would be less than the town council agreements, and the town council agreement will apply to that project. Um, so, evergreen or native trees must also be planted 10 feet outside the edge of the berm to provide extra screening to residential properties, and all substations shall be screened with evergreen trees, not exceeding 10 feet in height. Uh, that was recommended by the electric division, just to ensure that the trees don't grow too big, or they fall on substations. Um, and they have to have fencing that will be designed to withstand ice and wind loading. Um, and all substations must be located a minimum of 400 feet from a residential property or residential zoning district. residential zoning district regulations. And they have a restriction on research, manufacturing, et cetera, and the facility has to be at least 25,000 square feet. I didn't see that in, this is taken out.
Yeah.
And the manufacturing definition doesn't have the restriction in it. I was just curious why that was removed.
Because I think because we broke it down specifically by use.
We also did add a definition for construction development.
Sorry, it's cross-referencing the definitions, I know. I guess in the definitions, there's no building size requirement, but the old regs had building size requirement. I don't know why there was a size requirement initially, but I also don't know why we decided not to, and I would just.
So I think, um, yeah, if I remember correctly, so these have been obviously, uh, you know, being worked out for quite some time, but, um, it was basically why, why is there a minimum requirement? We couldn't answer it, so we got rid of it. Uh, if commissioners or public feel strongly there shouldn't be a minimum size requirement, we're definitely open to adding it back in, but we didn't want to, you know, get rid of a use that could potentially be, be great in zone IX.
Okay. If you don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's just an old hold, hold, to be honest.
Anyone else, Mr. Simmons?
Um, I have a question on page one, um, because we don't often talk about these, but could we take the opportunity since we're doing the regs to strike 4.9C on helipads? With the loss of Bristol Myers, the loss of their helicopter, I don't think there's any approved helicopter pads in the IX. Sound is an issue, so I would, I would suggest striking that.
We were thinking about striking it before, but we just left.
Yep, striking. And, um, I just hesitant to say on page two, under subsection five, data centers, 5A. So the sound and vibration impact analysis is, all of that is only for a data center. And is the peer review language strong enough that it mirrors and matches traffic? So we would, we would, we would require them to submit it and if we peer review it, they would pay in advance of any decisions.
We've actually, so the traffic peer review was not, was saying that, that the applicant had to pay before decision was made, but now we're saying they have to pay upfront before it's reviewed by a peer reviewer. So we need to submit that.
Okay.
There's a new state statute that allows you, uh, Tom, Clark, him.
Right at the top of page three, and for the life of me, I can't remember why it was an issue. It's the very first sentence, it's a continuation, where it talks about the, uh, all substations must be located a minimum of 400 feet from a residential property or residential zoning district.
Because some, there are some residential properties in the IX that are still there and existing. It's kind of like half farm and half residential use, so we kind of looked at what was existing already.
Okay.
For example, on North Kirk Road, there's several houses, um.
That's what I'm thinking of, yeah. All right, so if, so residential property, and I guess maybe are we clear, it's only a house, not a garage shed? It, it's the primary residence?
Yeah, just, I get what you're saying, I have to find.
Well, what I'm saying is not what's written, that's why I'm thinking, because it says residential property.
Yep.
Are we, you know, and I'm thinking back, there was an issue where someone had a large amount of land, but the house was farther on the property than the tenant used, so I just, I don't know if that's the best way to say that. And then if I put, Mr. Chairman, my last comment, is number six, quite frankly, should be the new number one with the helicopters, because this is all of the section of what is, um, required a special permit, but that's the, that's the big one.
The bare lead.
Yeah, exactly, so six should be one, uh, in my opinion.
If you can go back to the map, we can just take a look at the, the parcels that number six that you just suggested would apply to, would basically be this parcel here, because it has both here, this parcel here, this parcel here, and I believe possibly this one, which is mainly in the IX, but has a small portion here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just to describe it.
Any other commission members? Yeah, please, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just have a couple, oh, that's it, thank you. In, in section C to B, we make changes, um, we change, we swap, um, addition out for expansion. And then if you look at subsection C of that same section, in that first line there on top of page two, we make a reference to addition again. I think if we're being consistent, that should be.
To be cut.
The, another question I had is when we get into accessory uses, um, we're adding ground-mounted solar panels and satellite dishes. Is there a reason why we're not permitting building-mounted solar panels or satellite dishes? I would think that, that's something that we would want. Anyway, I, we've, we've done it in the other, we've actually included a section in.
Yeah.
The WI district, and we could just copy that section and put it into the IX district.
Only because specifically, uh, you know, we were asked by the water division not to include ground-mounted solar panels in the watershed.
Right, I, well, that I, yeah, that I can understand.
So, you know, it's a good catch.
You, and then my last question to you is, you know, we always, and I know it's, it's in every single zone throughout the regulations about, um, uses generating 100 peak hours or more. And I'm wondering, are, are, has there been any move away from that, that type of standard in regulations? I mean, we, we just had the, and I think Commissioner Fitzsimmons brought this up, and it's good, it's a very good point, you know, we just had that Amazon application, and what, what we noticed was that it really didn't matter what the, the peak hour traffic being produced was, because they were producing traffic throughout the day, and, um, you know, I, I sort of wonder whether, if any towns are, um, have started to move away from that standard.
Not that I've noticed and not on the state level either, as far as I'm aware, um, you know, you'd be the first.
We tried to move, I don't know if you mentioned this, we tried to move any use that would potentially trip the 100 peak hour vehicle trip into a special permit use, so.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Anyone else? I guess I just have, when I was looking here on page, you know, on page four, you have following uses presented subject to approval of zoning permit, that's G. And then, you know, I flip down on page five, and then section H, which I guess is a, is a new section, that's just a repeat.
Yeah.
So I think one of those, just one gets struck, struck out, is that correct?
Definitely, yeah. All right, thank you.
And then just the last thing, just on the first page, when we talked about, you know, hotels, initially it was, you know, 150, at least 150 rooms on five acres. The acreage has been now taken out, is that a specific reason for that?
I think, again, we didn't really have anything to.
There wasn't really anything to justify it.
That, not that we could see, so, you know.
Okay.
And I think we, we took out, you know, like a motel, like we couldn't think of the scenario where there would be a 150-room motel, uh, speaking from fresh memory, because I remember that we were talking about.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and we kind of thought that we were really looking for more of the hotel and coffee center scenario rather than a, a really large motel. That was something that we were looking to include in the IX.
Okay. Yes, this gentleman, right.
Jim Wolf, Agribusiness Development. The helipads, we had two helipads, and I believe there's one that's still available, that's his flag and everything on. So if we take that out, is that, are we forcing to eliminate that?
In the IX. Are you saying in the IX is an active FAA-approved helipad?
I believe there was two originally.
Talking about Clark?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. They don't exist anymore.
I, we're not using it, but it's still there, it's still available, all right? And, so if he gave a handbought of it.
He just wanted to be able to expand. He just wanted to be able to expand the helipad.
One more.
It would be a late tip.
Don't buy a helipad for you. You got a place to land it.
What was the help for, it's down two rows.
I know.
Any other members, does that answer your question, Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
I take it. Any other members of the public that would have any questions on, on this section? Yes, gentlemen.
You talked about, you think.
Like, sure, a minor.
I'm going to get around to 62 Tanker Road.
Thank you.
I hear you talk about emitting sound, what about smell? When you manufacture something, you emit smell. Where is the balance of what's horrible and what's not?
So we put it under special permit because the special permit requirements take into account smell, noise, uh, smoke, everything that comes from that facility. Uh, so we figured, you know, I'm going to do a special permit process, we're going to everything that would be going on, because it's hard to, to know exactly what the land use is at this moment. Uh, we just did, I researched data centers in Virginia, New Jersey, California, Arizona, Utah, and just tried to kind of write the language as far as what I saw there, as far as their, their issues, so, if that's any.
I have a question. I'm Donna Orosky, and I live at 62 Tanker Road. Is this, this whole idea of expansion with Amazon and whatever you're going to build, is it mostly down on North trip area, down on that street? Because I, I noticed where Flexol and right off of Flexol, they're building a big warehouse right next to it. Is it going, is your expansion idea going that route? Or are you looking, we already have some businesses on North Farms Road.
So I, I think we're, I mean, Kevin, you can jump in here for Allison, but what we're looking to do is we're not, the, the IX zone is not being expanded, neither is the old, we call it the I-5, which now is going to become the watershed.
Interchange.
That interchange zone. So it's not a matter of expanding various zones, it's looking, I think, as Mr. Peavy mentioned initially, is, you know, to look at, uh, some uses that are in the, in the old I-5 zone, in the watershed, and, and trying to, uh, delineate better the zoning between properties that are in the watershed and then properties that are out of the watershed. But it's not creating new, let's call them industrial or, you know, I-5 zones, it's just trying to redefine and looking at, looking to try to protect the watershed and the uses in the watershed and to, I won't say restrict, but I think they are restricting, you know, some of the uses in the watershed. Uh, but as far as, you know, your comments with Amazon and all of that, I mean, this has nothing to do with Amazon, you know, with Amazon. We don't know in the future what uses would be coming into any of these zones.
Yeah, I'm Ken White, I'm the president of the Wallingford Farmers Group. I'm staying on top of what you've got, trying to keep up to date. So on this X, the IX zone, what you've got here, are all these things potential future uses in terms of what you put in each line item? Like, do some of these things already exist, or do they not exist? Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, any of the uses in black currently are allowed uses as of right now. So I can't tell you every use that exists in the IX right now, but it pretty much covers most of how it's being used at this moment. Uh, we just tried to expand and kind of delineate in case, you know, we get certain projects in the future, it's just expand the definitions on warehousing and distribution and manufacturing, because there's so many different types now of different manufacturing uses. And like I said, we can look at specific uses if you would like to and take them out of the definitions and, you know, that's the whole reason for the workshops, none of this is set in stone, so, uh, we could definitely look at every specific use in the definitions and look at how it would apply to the district.
So as I'm looking at the list, I'm trying to keep up on the dates. How much of this, like, for example, on the IX zone, it's mixed use, correct?
It's not technically mixed use.
Not technically, but there are mixed uses there, if you drop around the state.
It was just kind of an old fortress, so they kind of, you know, would want to keep agricultural farming and forestry in there as a lot of use, just a lot of. But technically, there's, I don't read there's any farm or commercial mixed use development in there as we speak.
That's an interesting point. I mean, it looks to me, I mean, for over 30 years we've had this mixed use zone, um, is it potentially possible, maybe in more general question area, away, to change the IX zone in areas where there's nothing there and protect that area from future development? I mean, come on, you, I'm not saying you created, you know, but somebody got together with a group of people and said, let's create an IX zone. So the public's here, why can't we change all that if we want to and change it to an RL zone and an NFA zone, which I define as farms and the RL zone as rural areas that are not developed, which is not even in any of this. All this seems to be encouraging more development, and that's what it looks like on the map. I mean, honestly, that's what it looks like. I'm just saying, that's, it looks like, that's why we're here, to let you know that we're glad to be here, we're glad you're doing the workshop, because you don't know what we're thinking, and yet there's a lot of great minds that discuss, and sure you work really hard at it, but as we get to more general questions, I think you have to look at what we want in the communities. And there's 40,000 people in this community and they're not here, but some of us do represent a lot of people that are of whose heart.
So I do understand where you're coming from, and my, I guess my response to that is that there's really two bodies that have any say as to what happens on a private piece of property. One is the Planning and Zoning Commission, as they apply the zoning regulations, and the other is the property owner.
Of course.
You know, so if the property owners say that they own a farm, for instance, today, nobody's telling them, they have to sell it, get rid of it and put in something else. It just, you know, same thing with a lot of developers or, or just property owners in that area, they buy land as investment and they want to develop it someday, maybe just not the right developers come along yet, so, um, you know, so it's one of those where we, I, I think that the job of the planning department and the Planning and Zoning Commission is to, um, apply the, the strategy, the development strategy for the town, which this section has, you know, for a very, very long time, been an industrial or interchange district.
But also, and I understand, so that's.
We were not tasked.
Potentially, if the future discussion, if the John, if you want that, is about possibly changing some of those zones to different zoning methods.
We were not tasked with, you know, taking every piece of property in the town and trying to rezone it. We were just tasked with trying to make, uh, uses that are more watershed-specific, working with water and sewer to define the uses, how that would be appropriate, so.
I'll, I.
I understand, we understand your concern 100%.
The other question I had, the only reason I bring it up, because you kept mentioning the data centers and the general topic, and I'm sitting here, I'm not saying anything, but since it's been brought up, might as well kind of just, you know, I'm just going to talk in generalities. So data centers aren't currently in the IX zone, they're not part of the current zone, correct?
No, yeah.
Okay. So, I'll just leave it for later, I guess, is the whole general aspect, if you open the Pandora's Box to say any data center anywhere in the world, and you've explored it, or not have, but if you do that, then you're opening a Pandora's Box, that's for data centers, maybe industrial use, whatever it is, the door opens up, how are you going to close it once you open it up? How are you going to stop all these things? You know, Wallingford is right off 91, it's a great corridor, we're in the street, let's go to Wallingford, let's build every piece of land that they zone that's open to us and bring in our dollars, our proposals, you know, work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and by the time you get signed in 20 years from now, this town will look like a great industrial zone for everybody, and the residents, nothing left. You know, that's my observation from the maps. Now, you could agree or disagree with what I'm saying, but I studied these maps, I'm a quick learner, and nothing phases me out, and what I see here, and I'm open to listening to everything, I think there's a lot of interesting dialogue going on here, but I think we have to look at. But I think we have to look at the overall thing, is what I see here, there's a lot, a lot of stuff being suggested. It's only, it's only suggested to wear a workshop, but if it becomes rules of law, so to speak. If you, if I have a company A and I have like billions of dollars, say, Wallingford just has all these great ideas that I can come in and there's very little room for anyone else to be protected from us, because we can come in and do our proposal. I mean, that's just my opinion of what I see here so far, but I know I'll just stop here. But I want you to look at what you're doing here as a proposal, I know nothing's written in stone, but we got to think about the ecosystems and a lot of things I'll get into later. This is just the point I wanted to, we talked about data and a few things, so it kind of eye opened me a little bit. And I appreciate all the information there, because this is stuff I didn't really know about. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I know you.
I know we've been talking about water. Now, could I bring up what I've been asking?
The water, that's, the regulations are coming up a little later. Again, what we want to focus on is we're looking at the industrial expansion zone and the uses in the industrial expansion zone. We have other, as we've seen, regulations dealing with the watershed. So we have those regulations to come up, and I, I think that's where your question is going to be.
Okay, another thing. I worked at Bristol Myers. Exit fifteen, take a right and a left, and it's down there. Bristol Myers is no longer there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a hundred and fifty acres there. I understand. How come no one's looking over there?
Looking over there for what?
For putting stuff over there.
That would be part of the proposed WI zone.
I mean, I'm not quite sure what your question is as far as how no one's looking over there. You can not pursue the.
We have.
Okay, to my knowledge, whether I, right, saying this or not, I don't care. We have five farm owners selling their land or sold their land. There's two hundred and fifty acres. We also have Bristol Myers that's empty, it's a hundred and fifty acres. I'm concerned what's going to happen to all this land and what are we going to see over here? That's what I'm concerned about. And I'm concerned about the war that's going to, from driveways running off, where's it going? They have retention ponds, are we going to have oil leaking from cars and everything going in the groundwater? I got a lot of.
That's coming up in section four, quarter four.
Those issues are coming up when we get into those regulations. I doubt it, and certainly hope not. Let's try to keep the language a little clean, please. Uh, yes, this, uh.
Mayor, Mayor Rosinsky, I wanted to ask if you're going to reduce the amount of open space in the industrial exchange? If you would compensate by including more natural landscaping to make up for the loss of open space in that area? That'll help with those overall groundwater quality and runoff water quality. And I wanted to ask, because I can't tell from where I'm sitting, is the North Farms Reservoir in which zone?
That's in the IX.
Okay, so, so that would be a good reason to try to.
Actually, it's in that, what are you, forty?
Oh, it's RU forty?
Yeah.
Okay. Does any of the IX drain into the North Farms Reservoir?
I believe.
I would think it does.
On the waterfront.
And so, and that, that is a chronic over fertilization problem, that reservoir, North Farms Reservoir, where people go to boat and fish and so on. And anything we can capture upstream of that will make a cleaner body of water. So some of the changes that you're going to be proposing in the next part tonight to protect water quality in the watershed, the new, whatever its name is, watershed interchange district, you, you could also apply some of those to the IX, even with the industrial parks, and get some improved water quality there. So like a no net loss of trees could be one thing you could do. You could do vegetative buffers along any of the swales that drain those industrial properties. There's some up there that have no buffers whatsoever. I've been up there taking pictures of them and some of them just have the swale, but there's nothing to catch any runoff from the lawns of those industrial sites before it gets into the swale and eventually gets into the North Farms Reservoir. So anything we can do to keep the water filtering is good. And, and I know you're trying to get away from the campus aspect of the old zone and you're reducing the amount of space, open space, but maybe you can trade that for more natural landscaping, more buffering, leaving more trees. So that's my request, as a water quality request.
So we did, the existing language, or really the trend in like the eighties and nineties, is that the open space would be just landscapes, you know, mowing of the lawn area, just expansive lawns. But we've reworked the open space definition to include a, a natural vegetative state. So it would allow you to not clear all these trees and all these buffers if you don't need to. And I think developers are really going to take to that well, because it would be less money for them to spend. So I'm sure there'll be some aspect of a, you know, landscaping and left front yard and everything, but it wouldn't be required to have acres and acres of mulled lawn.
And the, and we also reduced minimum parking requirements. So technically you're reducing open space, but you're also reducing parking lot sizes. So kind of, first, Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About the mayor, again, fourteen Marine Lane, this may be a little bit out there, but I know we took out power pads. And because we're silent on, I don't know that the FAA, frankly, has figured this out yet, but, you know, drones are a thing that's coming. Is that something if we're silent on it, an application comes in, just thinking about how that would be handled versus some sort of placeholder that says joint activities at some level requires special permit? I, I don't know what, you know, how we handle it, but I'm not sure that silences it.
Well, I think that's something that we could, certainly could look at. I think that's, you had a question?
Uh, actually, in response to the landscaping, in your, your next section in, in the water protection check, item number four describes landscaping really well. And the active property be added to the IX as well as the WI. It's in for the WI, it's very well written. I guess my only question would be, with that type of landscaping, if a, an employer wanted to do a trail or picnic event for their employees, would it affect, you know, that, that space?
I believe we read it was passive recreation to the definition. We kind of thought of that, uh, for open space, and I believe if you look at the definition, it has passive recreation, so not like, you know, baseball or something like that, it's more of just hiking through it. So yeah, conservation or passive recreation.
But if you could move that section four over, you're both sides of that.
Anyone else? I believe it was, I think the young lady behind, yes, in the, no, you.
I'm just kind of taking notes, because I didn't realize that we were going to be allowed to speak. But I guess my, my first question is, is this watershed rezoning specifically because there were serious deficiencies in the regulations of this IX zone that omitted these data centers? Is this why this whole rezoning is happening?
This has nothing, no, I mean, data centers had, was not the genesis of this. You know, that's.
No, but I'm speaking specifically to the IX zone behind North Farms and Tankland. Is the watershed aspect of the rezoning because technically the data centers wouldn't be? Yeah, it wouldn't comply. So is this what's going on here?
Wouldn't comply with what?
Wouldn't comply with the IX zone that's currently established.
So I think a big part of what we were tasked with is finding the existing, like the current uses that are statewide, nationwide to update our zoning regulations, because there's a lot.
Correct, but is it updating them, are you completely changing it to adhere to them, just kind of walking in and changing the demographic to the entire, you know, neighborhood that we've been living in?
No, absolutely not. So we did look at.
I think Mr. Fitzsimmons would like.
Sure, I just, yeah, I, I want to clarify, because I, you saw me shaking my head when you were asking that question. We, the commission and staff and prior town staff have been discussing IX and I-5 regs for years, for years.
Twenty.
Twenty, yeah. The, the data center is nothing to do with this. This has been, this continues to be a workshop, you know, and I think the idea of, we were close at the end of the year and then we got comments from our own water and sewer that said, and through the mayor's office, hold the phone, then you kind of regroup on this. So that, that application, our, our own application was about two years in the making. So it was, it was before data centers was discussed in town.
Well, that, let's be clear, the, this, the data centers, whether it be them or other industry, years ago, when the Wobisky Farm was battling with the town of Wallingford, these plans that were kind of snuck in at the last hour seemed eerily similar to those of years past. Well, you might not know, but I know, because I've lived in town for many years.
So I would like to, I mean, I don't know if it's my place to clarify the whole process, but we're in workshop over now, I know we all understand that. And then eventually, we're hoping to get a product, the full regulation changes that can be presented to plans or the commission for their hopeful approval. And then, once those regulations are hopefully adopted, then other data center companies will be able to come in and submit a zoning special permit for approval. And then, you know, at that time, that'd be a public hearing, and so it's not a way to sneak anything in by any means. It's just a way to lay some framework for what the town wants to see from these developments.
Because we know you don't like the GodSpace proposal, but you have to separate data center use, what a data center is to say on its own, from that proposal.
No, I understand that, but I just hope that everybody who's, you know, in a position to make these leadership decisions take into consideration the residential neighborhoods, because it's very, very easy for all of you to see the pros to this when you don't have to live with the cons of it and the consequences of it. So I'm just going to ask that if you would not, if you definitively would not put this in your own backyard, be moral enough not to put it in ours?
Yeah. What I'm saying, like, the IX though, right now, has uses that are worse than a data center would be and closer with setbacks.
So it does seem to be inappropriate use to include in our IX zone, is our opinion.
And I just, I just want to say, you know, there's, there's a reason that these data centers are never put in residential areas by the horror stories that are well documented and legally documented in Arizona and also in Ireland, because they're just not put in residential areas for a magnitude of reasons. Many having to do with documented serious health issues. So you should really look into the neighborhood to see if people suffer from migraines, anxiety, any type of stress-related mental illness, because this is all documented in these neighbors, in these neighborhoods. There is class action lawsuits. So if you have this information available to you and you dismiss it and put residents in harm's way, guess what's going to happen?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's very serious, and I think you need to really realize that, from my perspective, you know, I was very vocal in the town council meetings, and it's, I'm finding not just for my family, but for my neighbors as well, because it's going to completely devastate our quality of life.
I hope everybody understands that we do take all these comments from commissioners and the public very seriously. So we, we appreciate everybody coming out and.
And I just want to make my comment, you know, you people have to understand that these are obnoxiously loud. They are on twenty-four seven, seven days a week, they don't shut off on holidays. They don't shut off when you want to go into your backyard after a long day and work and relax. It's constant. And again, it's well documented.
That's exactly why we included a noise and vibration impacted analysis study.
Do you have science to back up that noise vibration? Is there any scientific value to what you're saying?
Well, yeah, so there's an analysis that would be performed, and then the town, it would be the commission's right to hire a peer reviewer, somebody who's an expert in that field to review that and make sure.
It was actually recommended by an engineer that worked with the town in the town council process. So that's where we got most of the language from.
Okay, I really hope you really do your due diligence and research all of this, because there's going to be a lot of people negatively impacted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, yes.
John Hay, seventy-six, Tankland. Uh, I just want to confirm that I understood you correctly, Mr. Peat. Did you just say that GodSpace is not going this route, or I misunderstood you? GodSpace still going to apply if data use permitted? GodSpace, whoever customer brings, will still apply for special permit?
But they have to adhere to the town council agreement.
Well, but is it, will, will they still apply for the special permit?
Correct, yes.
In case of the contradiction between the terms of special permits? Because for issuing a special permit, there is a very detailed regulation in our town planning and zoning regulation, paragraph seven and so on, um, which says that planning and zoning regulations, very strict, basically, reform. So, um, how, the host agreement has certain setbacks that were not established on any acoustical model or any sound mitigation, they were based on visuals. Now, we understand that for special permit, you need to go with the acoustical study. And at that point, the setback might be thousand feet in order to mitigate down to the environmental level. So would I misunderstand, go to GodSpace or whoever is the hyperscale, still go through this?
So, yeah, they have to comply with anything that's in that agreement. And then, you know, whatever that is more restrictive through the zoning process, that would apply to them as well.
Special permit, how would it be, the whole package?
Yes, yeah.
And so the special permit process allows the commission to take a peer reviewer's findings? And if they do, you know, recommend a one thousand foot setback, then it's the commission's right to require that. So that, that's why we have it under special permit, so the commission has more ground, more, more flexibility to require certain.
Yep. Because we're still unknown, like she mentioned, about the use, so we want to try to do it in a way, if it, if it is going to be allowed, in the best way possible, we think, but.
Now, is this the time to go in the midst of, in the midst of definition of the, um, noise study? Like what exactly substantial, or it's for the meeting on the thirteenth? Or this is the time you want to discuss it?
Well, I think you can discuss that right now.
Yeah, it's part of these.
I think it's part of the regulations.
I think I'm referring to the, uh, page two. C five data centers, C five A.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, I think my question is, who defines substantial raise of environment? So because, um, special permits are very well documented and everything is laid out for these. And then we had a special permit application just recently, Amazon. And Amazon lesson for me personally, very comforting lesson was that in terms of sound, no matter why they were shut down for different reasons, for sound, there was a very clear bar was set very clearly, even though they were loud in the zone specifically. Uh, they came first complying with the zone, they were within zone noise regulations, which is impulse noise and the continuous noise. They were within those boundaries and still, based on the acoustical study, they will comply to add the sound wall to make sure that they comply specifically with both impulse and, um, background noise, continuous noise, I'm sorry, for that area. And it was very well presented, the process was very, now here, do I understand correctly that it's the same approach? The bar set the same way, it's environmental period?
Correct.
Or substantial, what is substantial then, what can we say about?
Well, the, the study would have to require baseline environmental noise level, which, well, the sound study that they did for the initial town council was roughly two weeks in the field. They established a baseline decibel level at daytime and nighttime.
And then locations, right, discipline it, and you go around the whole perimeter, because it also.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how the engineer does that, I'm not a sound engineer, but from what I read, yes, they take, you know, readings on all aspects of the entire neighborhood, the entire property. So if you're talking about a three hundred acre property, they'd have to, you know, take noise levels throughout every boundary of that property.
And if they were to submit something that our peer reviewer does not think it's extensive enough, then that would be the peer reviewer's comment, and I'm guessing the commission would recommend that the sound engineer for the applicant would go ahead and be put their study. So that's something that we'd be depending on our peer reviewer, the expert in the field, to give us the guidance on.
So substantial rates? So substantial rates, does not rate, why don't we just put does not rate, because this is the standard that was set on Amazon, and it's well documented.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it, I guess, and I hate to do this, and I see our corporate counsel in the, uh, in the back.
Attorney Small.
This, this was one of the, this is one of the questions, is substantial, substantially, was one of the, the issues, questions that I, I raised with, with our corporate counsel. I, I don't know, Attorney Small, would you perhaps like to answer that maybe to give the scene?
Well, I think it was developed with, um, the assistance of a sound expert, I mean, I think that the, the problem is, is that in a different, to say that it can't increase at all, um, that may not be, I mean, an, an increase does not necessarily make it a bad thing, so we can look at whether to change the word substantially, I, I think it, the reason when you rely upon an expert in that scenario, and they're giving you the opinion, this is, you know, that is a substantial, you're relying on their expertise, and by using that word, I think it also gives the commission the leeway to make a judgment that something, perhaps that someone may argue isn't, they could say, well, I'm sorry, we, we think it is. So we can look at whether or not that word can be tightened up, absolutely, we'll do that, I'll consult with the expert, but we don't want to make it so tight that the commission can't make a judgment, you know, hopefully with expert assistance, that in a given situation, something that all kinds of people may think is perfectly reasonable, but they think is substantial, so we want to make sure we have the room to be able to say no based upon something, but more than happy to take a look at it, and I'll consult with, we can consult with the expert.
And I think that's the room that makes us worry most, because the nature of the sound, it doesn't stop for a second. In Amazon's case, I'm sure neighbors were not happy, but they knew that the beat will go away. Now, once this is on, so this is why it's so crucial from our perspective, to make sure it's ambient period.
And if I could.
Because it becomes our new ambient sound, this is it.
And if I could just add that it's well documented in devastating health effects just as badly and dramatically low frequency as high, and this is why the studies really have to be thorough.
And that's why it's probably infrasound.
You know, a, a data center or any type of, um, manufacturing or what that, that sits right next to the highway, so if you say it can't go over the ambient, I mean, those things can make noise, and if you're sitting right next to the highway, it makes no difference to anybody around it. It doesn't mean that there wasn't a change in it, but it means that it's not going to affect anyone. So that's, that's what we need to be somewhat careful of, because this regulation is not being written for that particular project, it's being written for a data center anywhere within the zone. So that's, that's the kind of thing we're going to be looking at.
Because also, you know, as long as it's not ambient, but substantial, that word, you will be facing attorney, like we were facing from Amazon, and they will bring it up, and they will say, no, that's not what your regulation says, I'll challenge it onto you, and they will come back to you, Attorney Small, asking for clarification of.
Attorney Small, and I've had that discussion about this, so.
And it's same is adversely impacted, those words, I understand that everybody was trying to put the best effort into saying something vague, but there is a drawback to business, and of course, we tend to interpret it to our disadvantage. Um, also, the other question is generators, are generators going to fall into this environmental noise?
Correct.
I thought that was harder to achieve, but that's what's going to be required?
Yes, everything that gets, you know, from the data center proposal would fall under these requirements, every aspect of it.
Okay, that sounds very good. Uh, and that other question, uh, for compliance, I know at the Amazon hearing, there was a very interesting idea with the traffic, to wait till they comply, certain changes in the traffic patterns or markings are implemented before issuing certificates of occupancy. So here, the wording might say they need, the design should be beautiful, who is going to double check that design and the actual results? Who's going to switch the thing off, test it, make sure it works, it complies, and then probably make a certificate of occupancy conditional on that as an idea? Enforcement, we're worried about enforcement.
Well, they would have to, before the building department would sign off, we'd have to go over all of the conditions of these approvals and make sure that those were met before they get that building permit. So as part of the zoning process, you can put that condition in, and they can't get a certificate of occupancy before everything is met.
Just a, oh, sorry, I gotta, just to build on, sorry, um, is it, can we put something in the verdict or the wording that says that there's, if this does happen, which looks like in May, something that in six months, they do these six month tests on this verbiage to make sure they comply every six months throughout the calendar years, so that we don't have to worry that over, like, two years from now, the muffler has a hole in it, and the ambient sound gets louder, or the trees are dying from the visible view, they're not replacing the trees, you start seeing things that are not complying to this regulation.
So something like quarterly testing?
Something, something along the quarterly line, that they, that they go through this agenda again, and they check off this list to make sure that they're complying every quarter throughout the years they're, they're doing business.
That's a good question. Hey, I'll take this gentleman over here.
Plissline here, 26 Tankwood Road. I, I just had a question about the ba, the baseline noise study, when would that be conducted?
During the permitting phase.
All right, so the, a company, um, the data center, for instance, would have to apply, and then they're responsible for conducting the study?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so you're satisfactory to the student?
Well, so the commission's satisfactory, and they do have grounds to hire a peer reviewer.
So if they, you know, if they conduct the study, and the commission does not like what they see, they get a peer review, and the peer reviewer, you know, spots tons of deficiencies in that, they have to go back, redo the study, resubmit it, and then have it peer reviewed again, so it's the same process as traffic would be. So as with Amazon, they, they submitted a traffic study, the peer reviewer found most of deficiencies, it came back, so it can go back and forth, you know, four or five times maybe, uh, if necessary, for, I can't, I can't speak to, you know, what it would do, but, um, yeah, that's would be the process.
Attorney Small. I think Attorney Small.
You know, I know we were talking about the general regulation, but in, in the case of the, if the gods, in the GodSpace agreement, they actually have to show all that and prove that to our expert during the design, so there's really going to be the multiple checks as the process goes through. So as they're designing what they're going to put there, they have to prove to the town's expert that it will be, um, in compliance with any sound requirements.
Anyone else?
I, you sir, but you've already spoken out, I'll come back and be sure to.
Tony, here's Ken, is he more comfortable? I think one of the, the problems that we're going to run into is without having a specific, um, uh, s, a sound ordinance in terms of, or frequency and decibel level, we could talk about decibel, decibel level all day, and they can get, they can get those pillars, you know, with, with blocks up, and, and get them underneath whatever decibel level you guys decide is, is, uh, appropriate, but unless you deal with the frequency of that sound, uh, which is where the health benefits are, the health, uh, the health problems come from, biointensity sound, you know, this other lady mentioned, there are all sorts of health problems generated by the intensity sound. Uh, the military uses it as a weapon, uh, not just us, but, uh, the Havana syndrome is, is being investigated, uh, from that, with a perception that that has something to do with it.
I actually thought that's, that's why including.
Well, it's, yeah, but infrasound, yeah, infrasound is not going to be the same thing, you're talking more about residents rather than frequency.
Correct, yep.
Uh, if we talk about frequency, then you can, there are just documented studies from the Work Health Organization, there, there was a study done in Paris, there was a study done in Sweden, um, all related to the frequency of sound and what that does to the human body, so, uh, where it will have, uh, effect on cardiovascular disease, um, stress, uh, it, it brings up all sorts of issues for people who are, uh, living close to these facilities, which is typically why, uh, data centers are not permitted in residential areas. I know that you said you, you looked at some of the data centers throughout the country, but the, the, if, and I urge you guys to do this as well, Google is your friend on this one, um, the city of Chicago is running into issues, and we're, we're facing litigation to close data centers, the city of Paris closed a data center because after it was built, um, they found that the noise levels coming from it in an urban setting were too high and would create environmental issues for the people living close to it, um, in Ireland. Where I come from, the Supreme Court slapped Apple's development of, of, um, a data center in the country for two reasons, one was the environmental impact, and second was to draw on the electric supply from, uh, there's a huge draw on electricity, we're talking about, uh, you know, in the GodSpace land, they can draw as much power as 200% of what the town's disney park is producing, um, so there, there are all sorts of concerns here, and I think if you, if you, and nobody wants to say, no, let's not do this, I mean, we're all for, uh, everybody is looking for economic development and, and something that's good for the town, but you're trying to do it in a way that doesn't kill your neighbors, um, or, or harm them, or, or, you know, bring a property values to nothing, I mean, there's, there, there are people on the street, uh, living on Front Street, as I said, that are just terrified of this thing, you know, that you're, you're looking at, uh, multi-generational families, you're looking at, uh, something like, I've been in the, in the country a long time, I've lived in this particular spirit for 18 years, and it's, it's just a wonderful neighborhood, and I think when you, when you, uh, you go to, to change it, um, you just tread cautiously and do it right, so that you're not, you're not destroying something that's, you know, true to the.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, back here.
Yes, thank you, I've got more things to say from listening, but, and I will say them, uh, number one, you know, no matter what we do, the word data does not exist in the current zoning regulations, and everybody needs to know that, it's not in our current status for regulations. So here's a simple idea, and you can just throw it out the window or not, let's take the word data as a proposed idea and put it in the garbage, and then we don't have to talk about the, the frequencies, the people's health, this is only a workshop with the word data that's not in current planning and zoning regulations. I'm proposing that you guys take it out of your idea and throw it in the garbage, we don't need any data centers in Wallingford, and let's look at the environmental impact, um, you know, that was talked about just briefly, about, and we don't talk about that, you know, when you build things, where there's open space or forest land, or orchards or whatever, you know, animals can't speak up, they can't speak up, birds can't say you're disrupting my nest, you know, we can do whatever we want, and we don't care about the outcome at the end of it. So you, I mean, I mean, it only takes a trip somewhere, you go to Maine, you go somewhere to get away, to where it's nice and quiet, but Wallingford as a town, has about 136 farms, and that's from the assessors office, I got that a few years ago, so I'm pretty much on target with what's going on in our town, we have open spaces, we have beautiful areas in our town, and where residential people live, they do have a right to have that quietness and interest, and what this gentleman said from Ireland, I never knew about, so these things that we learn, and hopefully we're all learning together, EDC and planning and zoning, we're all, we all have families here, we all live in town, we all have friends, you know, I believe in economic development, I was very supportive when Sonic came in, because it was already on Route Five, where there was a place that was already economically burnt down, and they built a new business, that's fine, if you go through town, we have to look at the environmental impact, the ecosystem, and that has to be incorporated into everything the planning is, you know, in this workshop, econo, I mean, eco, environmental standards have to be a big part, and we have to be strict, and not say, well, you know, we can move these regulations around a bit to make more economic development, come into the IEXO. Well, I, I travel through North Farms Road, I'm, you know, when I'm going to my radio show, so I see the Wobisky farm, I see all the beauty around it, and the people that have their homes, and I see the abutting Tankwood area where these people live, and I say, they're going to be devastated if this actually becomes a reality. So I think you all have to really seriously look at what this is about, and also think about the, uh, the environmental impact that it has, not just on residents, but on wildlife that can't sit in a meeting and speak for themselves, what do you think about wildlife? It's not just about the data thing, I think we should throw that out, and I'm being repetitive, but I know it's not in the zoning and planning, so why is it so important that we bring up data as part of our proposal to be put into the planning and zoning, why do we have to even kowtow to that and just throw that out, and deal with all these other issues we have? You know, we have enough, plenty of environmental issues, and we're not talking about that, we're talking about how we can make this nice for data centers, for industrial use, for hotels, for motels, we're not talking about the sanctity of life in our community, and why not? Why aren't we talking about this here? You see what I mean?
Sir, I, sir, I think you made your point.
Thank you.
I hate to ask you, but are we on watershed, uh, or?
No, I got another question.
Okay, good, name of the address, sir.
Ronald Maturro, 1009 North Farms Road. My question is, since I was electrician, and I worked in Millstone One, Two, and Three in Connecticut Yankee, where are they going to get the power from?
Is this the data centers?
All of them, all, anything that's going to be built over there, I want to know where the power's coming from.
So typically, it's my understanding that data centers, uh, if they're hyperscale, uh, they'll build their own substation, and that's all dealt with separately, we do have regulations here.
When you say substation, they're going to build their own power plant?
An electrical substation.
Okay. Does that mean they're going to build a power plant? Where are they going to get the power initially? That's what I.
Well, so every, every developer, I think, has their own way that they could go about it, but we can include language for electrical substations if that's needed.
Am I asking the wrong question?
So is that going to be?
My, I'm an electrician.
We're asking a very specific question, this is regulations of justice.
Is that, could that present other health issues for the residents in the area? If we have all of this.
Is this on talking first?
Of electric?
But if they're going to step it up, where is the power initially? Alls I want to know is, I know we have high tension wires already through there.
And they're going to.
They're northeast, you know, they're going to pick off that?
Yes.
Well, that's what I wanted to know.
Well, that's what we.
I mean, well, you didn't say that, I got to tell you, and that's what I found out, they're going to pick, and they're changing all the poles, do you know that?
I do.
Okay, okay, the power lines going through Wallingford, and they're all by us, okay, where we live, okay? I understand, I talked to a guy today, they are changing those poles, they're supposed to be putting them on steel poles, is that true?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Oh, geez, you guys don't know nothing, I know more than you.
So, so anything that, I will say, anything that's seen here, ever source does with the transmission lines, that goes through the Connecticut Siding Council, and that is not subject to planning and zoning approval, so, um, there would be really no reason.
It's 120 or 150 kVA going through there per wire, and that's three.
You know, you laugh, but this is going to impact our medical.
Yeah, that's right.
This is electrical waves.
That's right.
Current frequency on top of the low level and high level of ambient sound, this is not a joke.
And Wayne, I got a better one for you.
Well, look, look.
I got, Wayne, I got a better one.
Sir, just for a moment.
Okay, go ahead.
Look, no one thinks this is a joke, believe me, I think the members of the commission, as well as the town staff, thinks this very seriously, so when you say we think it's a joke, I certainly disagree.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that in terms to what we do now.
I disagree with you, you know, we were talking about, you know, the power and all of that, I think it, it was, you know, indicated that as far as putting in those lines, correct me if I'm wrong, that's not, that's not, the town is not doing that, if those lines are going to be.
They have to, they have to, and GodSpace, so she's referring to that, it has to go through the Wallingford Electric Division, I don't know the details of that proposal, but you can call the Electric Division, and they can tell you what the details are.
And that, and all these questions can't be asked during an eventual hearing that comes to that.
Yes.
But I think he as resident just wants all of you on board from everybody, like, when we ask a question, or he brings up a point that could potentially impact our health in another area, we want you to be aware of that, because this is our bodies.
And we got input from Electric Division, and the only thing they mentioned were the substations and the screening requirements, so that's the only comments that we had on the, uh, regulations.
Mary Moszuski, and I saw that you had the noise in there, which is good, the, there is air. The, there is air pollution from the diesel backup generators, and I tried to include that in legislation on data centers at the end of the legislative session. And that section failed because the advocates for the data centers didn't like the language. They felt that at startup of the diesel, they might be over the limit that I had written in the, in the proposed air pollution controls. So rather than saying, "Well, why don't you just adjust the language?" They just killed it, and it's dead. So I have to wait till next session to bring it up again. And so right now, although the diesel unit would only be run probably once a month for peak shaving, it still is a diesel generator, and it makes diesel smoke. And I would prefer, as a person that lives in town, I would prefer that we regulate diesel generators because they're smoky things, and they make diesel smoke, even if they only run once, once a month. They still make diesel smoke, so.
Thank you for that.
Because it's not, the legislation did not pass, but I think we need it. Is there anything we can do in this proposal to cover not only sound but also air pollution regulations? And I can give you the language that-
Yeah, that would be my question. What were you, you know, what were you proposing? It adds something that we certainly could take a look at.
Yeah, it's technical language, and I can give it to you, run it by the data center folks. But I think something needs to be there, either in the state law or here in the P&amp;Z. Something needs to be in there because, you know, you don't know who's the next owner of the place going to be. Are they going to be as cooperative as the first owner? You just don't know. And it's good to have some kind of regulation in place when you're talking about a diesel generator.
If you can provide that language.
Yeah, I'll give it, I'll give it to Mr. Pajin.
Yes, sir.
Another question I have, at night, that place can be well lit up all night long. It's going to be like daylight.
Okay.
So what are they going to do about that? Is it going to be like daylight? I mean, how, how, how can we straighten that problem out?
Well, there's lighting, we have, there's lighting restrictions that we have in our regulations, in the, in the regulations.
And they're not going to affect the residential where they're behind me, and I'm not going to affect me where my yard is all lit up all night?
There's restrictions as far as full cutoff, we have full cutoff lighting. They have to provide a, on most of the projects, they need to provide a lighting analysis as far as how the lights are going to come off of their site, and restricting lights coming off of their site. I don't know. We'd like to expand on that a little bit more.
So it has to, you generally have to show that there's no light emitted more than zero foot handles over the property line. Is that correct?
Yep.
Terminality, yeah. So cannot get any foot handles over the property line?
Yes, this lady in the back.
I'm from 18 Tanquid Road. I don't know if there's any language in there that addresses the height of the buildings. I know with the gas space project, couldn't really get a clear answer as to the height of some of the buildings. Some of them were thought to be maybe 45 feet tall, which is pretty tall. I didn't know if that was encompassed in any of this language as far as the height of buildings. They will be pulled out.
Sure. So the gas space agreement, I believe, Janice, is 45 feet, not more than 45. So right now, it's at 30 feet, and if they do want to increase it, there is no maximum height. They have to, have to, so every one foot they want to increase it, they have to have five feet increased in the minimum front side and rear yard setback. So that's all dictated by the lot size. So if they want to increase it to 45 feet, that's an extra 15 feet from that, so they have to increase the minimum front side and rear setbacks an extra 60 feet. If I'm doing correctly, which I know.
So this one, which here is to receive whatever range.
Has already been put in place for the host agreement?
No, the host agreement is for the gas space project, so if that's more restrictive than this, then they have to comply.
Right, but if this were more restrictive, this would go into effect, correct?
So at least there's some provisions, because the elasticity of building has to be set for that.
Correct.
Ladies, gentlemen?
Yes, so we're done with the water and sewer. Are we done with the water and sewer? Not water and sewer, but the watershed issue?
We haven't started on the watershed.
I mean, it does, Mackenzie does supply two-thirds of the order to the town. We have some concerns about that, too.
Yeah, again, that's, that's a regulation that's coming up. I haven't got to that point yet. Anyone else?
Very quick.
Very quick, please, good.
What is the 400?
Name and address, please, again.
Jenny Mae, 76 Tanquid. What is the 400 feet from substation to the residential is based on?
Which is based on the setbacks that were in the proposal, essentially. So 400 feet, we, I think we asked Electric Division would be an acceptable setback for a substation. They said 400 feet.
That they have now in place whenever they build a substation in Wallingford. Is that a regulation?
Because there's a substation on, I forget where they said, John Street or the residential area that's within 100 feet, so we decided to quadruple that for a data center just to give extra space.
Anyone else?
Just one, one quick observation, that we're not just talking about one substation. We're talking about three substations?
I don't know, depending on the proposal.
The regulations covers substations that may be needed in the future for any proposals that come through. So if you're talking about a specific proposal, that would be handled with their applications.
Well, specifically with gas, it's such a point, you pointed out that there's three substations.
Gas space hasn't given us a proposal to planning and zoning. Yeah.
Anyone else on this, so we can move on? Okay.
Do you want to move on?
Yes.
Okay, so just, I guess, as a refresher, WI stands for Watershed Interchange District, and we'll pull up the map since it's been a little while. So that's going to include areas that were previously IX and I-5 that fall mostly or completely within the watershed protection overlay district. So the goal here was to propose uses that would not have an adverse effect of downstream waters, including waters that flow to the Mackenzie Reservoir.
So we're trying to limit uses that would require lots of pretty surface area, that would require lots of chemicals to be treated in the winter. And yeah, we're trying to limit parking and require vegetated open space. So we can go through that. And most of the uses were taken from the existing I-5 and the existing IX, but we pulled out some of the higher intensity uses to limit their use of watershed. So essentially, we're just allowing, you know, food and beverage production, which are lighter intensity uses. We're restricting the amount of, what's that, retail area in them. So say if it was like a brewery, we're restricting the square footage of the tasting room. So it wouldn't allow large parking areas. We're allowing light manufacturing, which we described before in the definitions section. Research and development, where, limited warehousing and distribution. Public utility facilities and buildings without storage yards. Offices, including call centers and financial institutions. Hotels, conference centers, or combination thereof containing at least 150 guest rooms. And again, we're restricting the actual, I believe it's a retailer conference space as part of that. Governmental buildings, facilities, and uses. Outpatient medical treatment facilities, non-residential healthcare centers, existing residential uses, so if there's existing residential use exists, they don't become non-conforming. Child daycare centers, outpatient facilities, animal surgical facilities. That was just a recently approved text amendment to the IX zone. Veterinary facilities and indoor recreation facilities. And as far as the uses that require a special permit, helipads. Again, the Mr. Stevens, I could strike that.
Already noted.
So any uses that generate 100 peak hours, vehicle trips, or more would require special permits. And you can go down. And then the data centers, which we've all discussed.
And just to be clear, any changes that would be made to the data center section in 4-9 will be directly applied to 4-10. There will not be any difference.
Correct. So yeah, any language. And we wanted to put data centers in the watershed, as we discussed, with water and sewer, because they require little to no parking, they're very clean use, and they'd be better for, you know, a watershed area.
And by clean use, we really mean large building area, small parking area. Building area is considered clean stormwater runoff, so that could be infiltrated directly into the ground and replicate the existing hydrograph, which is, sorry, probably too technical, but that is the goal of inland wetlands, and the planning is overlooked at that as well.
That was just accessory uses. We are not allowing ground-mounted solar panels. And so here is the parking maximums that we're proposing. The commission may, may waive up to 75% of the required parking area if the applicant demonstrates such a waiver with warranties. So say someone comes in and they want to, they don't need as much parking as they're saying, they can waive up to 75% of the minimum requirements to reduce the parking lot area in the watershed district. Let's see, and then any later use of the, so they have to provide an area equal to the space required for such parking, just in case, you know, they do need it in the future. They have to reserve it, but they have to reserve it as open space. So 75% of that has to be vegetated and in its natural state. The maximum number of permitted surface parking spaces is 120% of the minimum parking. The minimum parking requirements is 611. And the same applies to maximum number of permitted tractor-trailer parking spaces. And then parking in excess of those requirements, if they really want to try to go above and beyond the maximums, they have to provide a one-to-one offset. So if they wanted to, say, 50,000 additional square feet of parking, and they have room for it, then they have to provide either that 50,000 square feet as porous pavement, or they'd have to provide as a green roof or some sort of permeable or water quality treatment. Practice, there we go. And then also, if they want to go in excess of those requirements, they could provide a parking garage or underground structure. As you can, as you can, we're going to expand on that. That's a cleaner, it goes directly into the storm sewer system. So that doesn't go as runoff, because they have to be connected to the actual system. And then those structures have to be included in the building coverage calculations as well. And then landscaping, there's additional landscaping requirements in this district on top of the landscaping requirements in 6.14. The required open space areas shall be larger continuous to both onsite, offsite, assisting open space areas. Open space areas shall be more natural in the landscaping rather than mowed, fertilized, or similarly maintained grounds. At least 75% of the required open space shall consist of natural and native land, original land areas, will be returned to a natural and native state that promotes pre-developed stormwater infiltration and percolation. The use of fertilizers and pesticides are made in open space is discouraged. Retail operations, which are secondary to, like I mentioned before, but integrated with the main use on the premises, provided that the retail operation shall not utilize more than 3,000 square feet or 10% of the gross floor area of the principal use, whichever is smaller. So that's just to cut down on food and beverage production, wanting like big tasting rooms such, or conference centers or hotels, making it more into a restaurant and a conference center or hotel. And so hydrogen rod vehicle fuel station operations, those already exist in that zone, so we just kept that language. We're allowing building-mounted solar panels and satellite dishes, but not ground-mounted. And then, yeah, we put in electric vehicle charging station as well for use on-site by associated vehicles. And any parking spaces associated with electric vehicle parking spaces shall be used to meet the minimum parking requirements, so they can't have more electric vehicle. They have to include those in the minimum parking requirements. And then mobile food vendor is the same language that's in there currently.
We only have a box for this one.
There we go.
In progress.
Okay, any commission members, any comments on this? Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In section 410C, 2B, again, we've-
I think he's going to change that, Jimmy. He's going to make it consistent.
Yeah, okay. So change the condition to expansion.
Yeah, keep expansion. There's three spots for expansion.
And then I, the other thing I noticed is that we have child daycare centers as a permitted use of it just site plan approval. And then in section B, we have it as a special exception.
We noticed that today.
Yeah, okay. We're going to take it out as a special exception, put it in the permitted section. Unless you feel that, show me a special exception.
No, no, no. The only other question I had is, you know, we took, we are not permitting the, what do you call it? The parcel sorting and retail distribution in the WI district, which makes sense to me.
Yeah.
But then I'm looking at all these uses that are permitted subject to site plan approval, and there's, there doesn't seem to be any limitation as to, you know, size or parking area or, you know, and the reason why we took it, took that parcel sorting out of here is because of the parking primarily, because we know that those uses require a lot of parking.
So most of, so before I keep back into that, most of the uses that we're allowing under this, we've actually reduced the minimum parking requirements for most of the uses. So they're going to require less than you now, and then there's a maximum 120% on those.
Okay.
And just, so we did run a lot of different existing parcels, I don't know them off the top of my head, but some that were generally five to 10 acres, some that were, you know, 10 to 20, some that were 20, 30 plus. And, you know, because there's noticeable parking lots, if you go into Barnes Industrial Park, and that are just mostly empty. So we're looking at, were those required spaces? Did they go above and beyond what was required, and now they're just not needed anymore? And we found that those were, basically, they provided twice as many parking spaces as we need it. So this regulation will help to eliminate that from happening.
Okay. Fair enough. I don't think I have any other questions. Yeah, hold on one second. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Pitt, send us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 3, subsection E3B, it talks about loading docks to be located inside or rear yards. Can we add somewhere in here, and I noticed I didn't notice from the prior one, where the building has to face the stream? So we don't have sideways buildings, and then, and then when they came in, like the, the medical facility next to the courtyard, Marriott, we had a big discussion about whether it was a front yard or it was a side yard, and they handled the whole building, and it was a disagreement, as far as I was concerned. So can we be clear that the building must face the front of the road so that there's no disagreement regarding- no disagreement regarding what's a side yard, what's a rear yard?
When you say face, you mean like parallel to? Do you want to get that to set there?
The front door must face the front street. You know, we have sideways buildings in town, you know? So. And then my comment on helipad stands. Helicopter pad. Thank you.
Any other commission members? Members of the public? We'll start soon, we'll get to you, we'll start personally.
My name is Debbie Delone, I'm at twenty-two Tankwood, and I have to apologize because I was trying to follow you. You said something about pesticides, but you were going to, your wording was, I didn't like your wording. It said something like we were going to strongly.
Discourage.
Discourage. No, you should actually have it in there as no pesticides should be used, because you could come to my yard and say, I really don't want you to use that, well, what's that gonna mean? You know, you really shouldn't have any pesticides, especially close to water.
No, I agree. Thank you. Yes?
Can I piggyback on that? I support this totally.
Just leave it at that.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I'll head over thirty-five Quarter Tree Road. I fully support your comment. I suggest, I was going to suggest a similar one. The only exception maybe being, and I would leave that to the experts, if there are any invasive species that you need to fight, that might be a legitimate cause to use whatever, that would be a question for the experts, but otherwise, please, just, no, not, not at all, it's our drinking water. I don't want it in there.
Thank you. Yes, and this gentleman, yeah, name and address.
Ryan Maturo, one zero zero nine North Farms Road. Now, he was reading in there something about the runoff water, did he read it in there saying it's gonna go to the reservoir at North Farms reservoir? Did he read that in there somewhere? I thought, I heard him say that.
This isn't in the near North Farms reservoir, no?
I thought, I, when you read something saying it was gonna go there.
I said it in my intro that the watershed status within the W I, that goes to the Mackenzie reservoir. That was in my intro, I don't think that's written in the regulations.
Well, what I do know is, if you go down that, that Seon Ping Road, that gravel road all the way down there, there is a bridge that goes over a stream. What is that stream? Where's that going?
I mean, the muddy river is the main. But I mean, there could be streams off of that.
Do you know where that is? What is it?
It's, I don't know if it's part of the actual land trust or if it's.
Land claim.
Yeah.
But if they're gonna have any runoff, shouldn't they put in a retention pond to collect whatever runoff and it'll stay in that retention pond and evaporate?
Yes, we're proposing stormwater management regulations as well as part of this. For every project, as well as anything in this district, is also requiring, requiring the, the regulations of the watershed protection district as well as these regulations, so it's, they have to go through all three. And we can, I can go through all that if you want right now, but we're trying to go.
Well, and just let you know, the next, so this is the W I zone, and then we'll be reviewing the stormwater management section, and then the watershed protection overlay district section.
Okay, another thing, I want to make a comment, okay? I've gone past, had a fluorescent tube in my hand, and I walked on, and I walked underneath the power lines at night, and it glowed. That's all I wanted to know, let people know that's what happened, and if it's glowing, I'm glowing.
Anyone else? Yes, gentlemen?
Fox, May, fourteen really. One item that seems to be out now in the W I that wasn't a, it's in the I X, I think it's in all the districts under special permit, is, requires special permit when excavating or filling land as per regulation six ten. You can see it on page two of your I X. So it's in every other district, but it's out of the watershed.
Yeah, we wanted to take, we wanted to take excavation, filling out of watersheds completely, just because of erosion runoff, sedimentation.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good thing, okay. Then two other real quick ones.
If the commission feels like, we actually have it back in.
No, no, it's great. So two other real quick ones, the, this is more of a comment, I think, but when we think about the W I, since it's entirely in the watershed.
Right.
The parking requirements, where it says you can go in excess of the max with permeable pavers and whatnot. That obviously, okay, I get it, you're, I'm in that district, I can, if I can show that I can put down permeable pavers, I can have more parking spots, but then I'm also, I've got the W P D overlay.
Correct.
Which says a hundred and twenty max. Which one wins?
Well, this one would allow, you know, the, the parking in excess, but anything that, you know, the W P D would impose, say that triple treatment train, so that would, all that language would apply as well. So if they can prove that, if they have the space, which, you know, most of these parcels probably wouldn't have the space to expand at a one-to-one offset that much parking.
I see how it could be contradictory, so we'll take another look to make sure that it's intentional, you know?
Previously on data center, whichever was more restricted, in this case.
But anything that is in a district applies, so anything that's an overlay and is more restricted, that would apply too, but, yeah, it could get kind of.
We'll take another look and make sure that it's dependable, you know?
Yeah. Fair enough. And my last, my last question, this, I know the focus is I five I X, eventually, will you take this, so we've got things like new definitions, talk about parcel sorting centers which exist in the I forty, but definitely, will you triple that through the entire document? Your total reg, so everything's aligned, meaning, you know, you've got definite, you've got references to warehouses or manufacturing in the I forty, I would think would make sense eventually, maybe it's not now, but at some point, kind of tie everything off, and definitions are similar across your document, that's all.
It's understandable, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Just.
Name and address.
Mayor Wyszynski, I'm just repeating it, one eighty-eight South Cherry Street, and I'm just repeating it to make sure it's on the record, but again, it's a really good job you guys have done for proposing for water protection. I would just ask for no net forest cover loss. There was a, again, I don't know which zone it's in, but Northrup Road had a, the cancer center proposed for Northrup Road, and it was on the only piece of woodland left in that northern part of the watershed, and they were gonna take it out, and there were headwater streams there, and it was protected by the forest. So ideally, we keep the forest intact, if it has to come down, replicate it somewhere else in the area, so there's no net loss of forest cover. And then again, the twenty-five foot buffer protection for anything that collects rain water and is now going into the watershed, that, that act of leaving the vegetation in place will filter most of the nutrient problems out, and it just makes it easier to keep the water quality high for the town.
And this, in this district, we haven't gotten to it yet, but we're also requiring a hundred foot buffer from every waterway in this district as well.
Which, and that doubles the inland wetlands.
Right, that's excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Yes?
I'll head over thirty-five Quarter Tree Road. Could you please go to the table, I think it's five one, that has percentages of open space and allowed build upon area? And, and sorry, I can't see it from back here, read what's allowed in the watershed, thank you. So just to make sure, so the watershed interchange area, the only thing that changes is the minimum frontage fee, but it still says, stays at fifty percent open space.
Correct.
And only fifteen percent allowed that non-building coverage, is that, okay? Just wanted to make sure, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Moving on. Oh, yes, just one, name and address, sir.
To Wolf Economic Development, since I have this slide up, you have the, I mean, I X, the proposed I X, you increased it to from twenty-five to thirty on the maximum building space. Knowing that, I brought this up twenty years ago, to go from twenty-five to thirty, is thirty enough? We have several buildings, property owners that have come before your commission, that have expanded beyond the thirty percent, and you've approved them all, and, you know, so I'm just wondering if the thirty is really enough?
I think that's something that we can look at, but I guess I'd like to see more, some more examples as to why, why it is not. Yeah, if, certainly, where I, I think we'd be interested in, in, at least considering that, but I think it's important to see just what the examples are and to see where we are with some of the existing development, what kind of issues that, you know, that presents itself. So there has to be, I think there has to be, okay, a logical reason for that, rather than just because someone wants to just keep building, building and building.
And I agree, and we have.
And if we do, and even if we do look to increase it, how do we perhaps offset some of that, you know, some of that impact on, what do we do as far as on the open space? How do we make the open space perhaps more, more viable or something? So I think it's something we can look at, but it's just not as, as easy to say, eh, okay, thirty, let's go to thirty-five. There has to be some good reasons for that.
Okay, well, I'm assuming we're gonna have another workshop.
Oh, I, that's more than an assumption.
All right, so let me put something together.
Sure. Thank you.
And if you ever wanted to get Kevin and I stuff, we could start to incorporate a bit too, yeah.
Okay, moving on.
I think there's more comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I just?
Absolutely.
Quick comment or question? So back to Mr. Wolf, point, maximum building coverage is set at thirty five, I forty, thirty-three point five, and I twenty, and significantly lower for I X at twenty-five, as the regulation stands now. Am I reading it correctly that intention for I X zone is generally developed? Like, less coverage, less intense, it's not, the way I read through all of the planning zoning guidelines, just for everything I could find, and, and all the actual uses in I forty, I twenty, and I X now, and they're very different. It looks like I X by actual use and by a lot of numbers of this is industrial light, and I just implore the commission to look at it again, at when we're putting, we're removing industrial general, manufacturing general, rather, from watershed. And I'm asking commission to think about it, how I X was conceived, what is actual circumstancing of I X, about, about saying residence they house, land trust, and consider, is it really a light industrial zone? Because that's what we got there versus the industrial, and consider manufacturing general either stroken out or under special permit or something, it's just, to me, you know that, but to me, it's the same.
Thank you. Okay, moving on now.
Can I say something?
Sure.
You know, everybody wants our town to succeed, and I understand that this could generate tax dollars to benefit everybody, but at some point, you need to like, just look at this big picture in its entirety, and realize that neighborhoods with living, breathing human beings who are raising their children five generations deep, which is my case, you've got that in one area. Health issues, eco issues, animal displacement, wildlife displacement, we have every type of wildlife back there, even red fox, which I believe.
No, I think, that makes a question, but I think this gentleman kind of reiterated that already.
But I'm, I'm just saying, you've got residential areas surrounding this, and on the other side, the land trust, and this is pristine land, why are you dumping industry that is well documented to negatively impact human life and animal life? Why are you dumping it in, in such a place that it's going, there's gonna be no benefits other than the almighty dollar? And I understand the almighty dollar is important, but is it more important than the human beings who are raising their children in this area? Is it more important than the ecosystem? Is it more important than the wildlife, the wilderness? You know, I, I've been five generations.
I know, I, I understand what you're saying. I think what we're talking about here is, most of these, the uses that are, the, most of these uses are already in the I X or even in the old I five zone, so those are there right now. What we're attempting to do is to better define what the uses are, like when we had, with, I don't like, I won't go, I won't go into that application, but I think what we're, you know, what we're trying to do is to be more definitive with the uses itself, but I think as Mr. Cargini indicated initially, with the regulations right now, to a very large degree, it includes, you know, all of these uses, so it's not that we're, you know, we're taking, we're, we're not taking property that's, that's zoned for simply, say, farmland or whatever, and saying now, we're going to start developing that with, you know, with manufacturing, all of those uses. The majority of these uses are already allowed in those areas, so that's, that's something that exists right now, what we're attempting to do is to better define it, and with the, the watershed area, to look to restrict uses in the, in the watershed, to protect the watershed, you know, in a much more appropriate manner. So it's not like we're all of a sudden taking real estate or land and rezoning that for industrial uses, that's not what's, what's occurring here.
Well, I understand.
And I, and again, and I understand what you and this other gentleman, you know, is, is indicating, believing, I understand, I think all the commission members understand that.
Let me ask you this, if all five areas, landowners did not sell, did the town ever entertain the idea of rezoning it to be farmland and take the industrial zone out from behind North Farms and Tankwood?
No, we've never had, you know, we've never had that discussion, this has been, you know, it's been designated as I five, and I'm not sure if Mr. Wolf, if you want.
The economic development, about twenty-five years ago, drew a plan and had a site plan made to extend the road from the industrial park right out to North Farms. That, and, will you show you those maps, they're twenty, twenty-five years old, and we looked to develop it back then.
Right, I think those are the maps I was talking about earlier that look similar to the plans now.
Yeah, so, I mean, this, this has been, you know, available for manufacturing for years.
When voices, when voices zoned can be captured? Do you know, Mr. Wolf? When did they happen and why?
I, I have, I think it's been, it's been, it's just been a very long time.
Do the owners usually plan a such rezoning, what does town can do to give a rest of it?
Well, I, the town can look to rezone property, certainly, but what, you know, what occurred back twenty-five, thirty years ago when that was developed, excuse me, when that zone was changed, that's when the zones changed, that's, that's what we have today.
Do you think one?
Yes, in the, in the back, name and address again.
I'll head over thirty-five Quarter Tree Road. One more point to the watershed, and only because you explicitly kind of encouraged data centers there, they run on diesel backup generators, correct? So can I assume, number one, that any language with the air pollution would apply to W I as well?
Correct.
And number B, would you consider any special language to make sure that that diesel, I, I assume it's gonna be stored on the site, that that cannot enter the watershed or, or muddy river or whatever?
Yes, I believe that's addressed in the watershed actually.
Okay, I.
It's in four thirteen.
Thank you, I didn't get that one.
Okay, what I'd like to do, if we could, yes, sir.
I'd like, I got a question.
One of these, I've noticed.
Waldorf has a lot of industrial, which is good, and they pay the taxes, which is good, and the residents pay less taxes because of our industry. Now, I'm gonna ask this question, would all these industry coming, is it gonna lower our taxes for the residents, or is it gonna stay the same?
I guess it would all depend upon how the property was developed. That's my best answer, sir, I'm not the assessor.
Well.
Yeah, that's my best answer, sir.
I mean, we should be concerned about our taxes, shouldn't we?
Not for, not for tonight.
Okay, so that's another nice.
That's another nice. I have some real good questions about.
Thank you, 'cause I wanna know, I want my taxes to go down if the industry's coming in here. But then.
Anyone else? Yes?
Well, referring to what she said, well, I talked about earlier, regardless of whether it's repetitive or not, we're part of this community.
Sir, we understand it. It's not, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, we've heard that.
I wanna know that, I wanna know that it's on the record.
It's been on the record.
And I wanna know that it'll be considered for, what you talked about zoning changes, that's my key point. Can we change the zoning, I think we can, 'cause it was created by twenty-five, thirty years ago, like people at that time, who brought in these changes. So I'm just saying, I want you to seriously consider changing, and I've submitted this report to planning and zoning, they have it on record, to change some of these IX zones, where areas that are open, to the farm zones or rural zones, that's all I'm asking you to consider, and that's why I wanna make sure you seriously gotta consider on the record. And do I have your agreement that you'll look at that? Yes or no?
We consider anything, I mean, if you, again, I'm not, I'm not gonna commit to say workfully to, you know, tomorrow, stop looking to, you know, to rezone anything, you know, we work with the Economic Development Commission, the Economic Development Commission, provides input to the planning and zoning, so there's a lot of things that come into the, you know, I, I would suggest that one of the things you may wanna do is to talk with the Economic Development Commission also.
I always have to talk to them, matter of fact, I support many things on Route Five that have come here in our community, so I'm just making sure that the people here that have concerns, not just residential areas, that the, like you were saying, I think is very important, that we look at changing some of these old zoning zones, where there is not buildings, where there's not, uh, department stores, and protect those areas, and change the zoning, and that's what I'm saying, maybe in a future workshop, we can go into that a little more and help be well. I mean, I'm happy to protect the watershed, I think that's really important, but I think we need to talk about the whole totality of land, and I know there is development areas, there's undeveloped areas, there's mixed zoning, we need to change it, 'cause it's old stuff, it needs to be changed to the current situation we're in right now. And basically, our economic, our, our ecosystem and the residential people, they make some good points, I listen to everybody, and there's a lot of good points here, everybody has some good things to say, I'm just saying, I want us to look at, making notes to say, okay, Ken, you know, we'll consider changing some of these zones that have been around for twenty-five, thirty years, and listen to some of these people in the community that have homes near our budding properties, like at Little Farms, right across the street, and what's gonna happen.
So, again, I think you've made your point, okay, I, I appreciate that, we have a lot to go on, to continue to go on here, and so I think we're being, I don't mean to be insulting, but I think we're starting to be a little redundant.
I understand.
We need to move on, so I thank you.
I thank you.
Yes, woman in the back again, and please, let's.
I'll try to be quick.
I would appreciate that.
Alec, go for thirty-five point three road, um, to that point, I think the P O C D has, um, supporting farm, farming use in, somewhere in, in the P O C D, it's, that is a goal, um, and then the other question would be, what would be the procedure, if these people are interested to get that zoning change, but what's the correct procedure? Would they have to bring up, uh, an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Anybody can put a zoning application before the Planning and Zoning Commission? Okay, moving on.
Sure.
You can PC if you want. We're gonna need a coming up break for a minute, um, so this section is stormwater management, four point twelve, it's a brand new section, does not exist in today's regs. Uh, the point of this is, um, you know, the engineering department reviews the stormwater aspects of every application that goes through planning and zoning, and right now, we review those based off of state requirements and, and guidances from the state of Connecticut, so this is a way to memorialize that in our zoning regulations, uh, because right now, quite truthfully, we require a lot, I think we recommend a lot of things in our, uh, comment letters to the commission, but if the applicant were to say, show me your zoning regulations where that's required, I don't think we could, so it's a way to, to make sure it's included in there, so I'm absolutely gonna spare you from reading this entire thing, but the gist of it is, um, attenuation of peak flow, um, so whatever is the existing ground cover today, whatever the existing stormwater that is exiting the site today, any proposals would not be able to increase that. Um, so that is applicable, this four point twelve section, to the entire town, not just IX, WI, not just one part of town or another, it's the entire town.
And that would be construction of anything over ten thousand square feet or more of impervious area.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of applicability, um, section, but we really tried to, to capture everything, for example, something that we excluded, just to kind of give you a flavor of it, is if, um, you were to build one house on one lot, we would not be requiring a full stormwater management plan. Something else, as we went through this, that we realized was lacking, is if a stormwater management plan was submitted with the operations and maintenance manual, which is to say all of the upkeep and maintenance that you have to do on your drainage system to keep it functioning in a way that promotes water quality, um, that, if that was approved for a certain landowner or property owner, and then the property was sold, there was no real record that the new owner has to abide by that maintenance, uh, manual, so what we're proposing here is a, um, filing a notification of operation maintenance manual on land records, so that when you go through the title search, if you're buying a, you know, for example, an industrial property or something like that, you'll see on the title search that there is a notice of plan that they must abide by, so, um, that's our way of kind of making sure that it gets passed on from owner to owner. Can you just sort of scroll through, and I'll see if anything else jumps out at me?
Can I go through definitions?
We, we do have certain definitions, they do get quite technical, um, they really are taken from the state of Connecticut, uh, resources, so. I'd be happy to go into anything that anybody wants, but, and then we do define exactly what we wanna see in the stormwater management plan, um, as much as we're looking at the state of Connecticut manuals to, to put together this section, we also looked at the town's MS four permit, and part of that is keeping track of directly connected impervious areas, so, you know, we're asking for those calculations as well, which is above and beyond the highway drainage manual or the water quality manual.
So we're looking at to preserve and protect streams, channels, weapons of water, wires, water courses, other natural features that provide water quality and quantity benefits, including upland areas.
Mr. Cargini, could you slow down a little bit?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
You sure you won't, too?
Yes.
So, yeah, we're looking to, you know, really preserve the natural features that are on the site, uh, as of right now, prevent pollution of drinking water sources, both above ground and below ground, uh, by minimizing the discharge of soluble pollutants, uh, and we're hoping, you know, to prevent pollutants from entering, uh, receiving waters in wetlands, and preserve undisturbed natural areas from development, and minimize creating and clearing of land, so we're just putting a lot of extra layers into these to really, uh, enforce what we're trying to maintain in most of our development.
And I guess I do wanna, um, kind of reiterate the MS four process, the entire state is going through this, and so, um, we had a lot of references to use from different towns, we were very picky about, I, I think I printed out, at least twelve to fifteen different towns, regulations, and picking exactly what we liked from each one, and how to make it the strongest, most, you know, the cleanest water, everything that we could, um, within reasonable guidance, so, that was a great benefit, so a lot of this is kind of a hot pot from different towns and different apartments that have already been adopted.
And the operation maintenance plan requires routine maintenance, uh, minimum of twice per year, uh, to ensure that the drainage facility or system is unimpeded and operational. Um, and anything else you wanted to touch on, documentation?
Yeah, it's, it's honestly pretty, uh, pretty dry, but it's, it's everything that you would expect for a stormwater maintenance plan, or stormwater management plan, rather, um, for, for larger developments, they will need detention basins, they will need underground detention basins, and we outline all of that, exactly what they have to go to, but it's, it's stuff that's honestly been done for as long as my predecessor was here, so, you know, at least about twenty years, so, this is just really honestly a way to memorialize it and be able to point, and honestly, makes it much more development friendly as, you know, they're looking through the regulations, they're not guessing, I get calls at least a couple times a week saying, what are you gonna require here, and, you know, I have to go through this every single time, so this is a way that, I think, just look at the zoning regs and provide us exactly what we're asking for the first time, and should help everybody on all sides of it.
Is there anything you want to, us to touch on more, or us to, uh, expand on more?
Keep scrolling, and I'll see if there's anything else that's different, or, and we'll definitely take some questions.
And then, obviously, we mentioned the operation maintenance plan, so prior to obtaining a zoning permit and or starting work on a project, uh, the operation maintenance plan and notice of operation maintenance plan shall be recorded on the land records. And then we have the minimum plan requirements, what it includes, so there's no questioning as to what they're, uh, they have to do. Then they have to submit, uh, as built before, a certificate of occupancy or zoning compliance, uh, certificate.
Yeah? Questions from the commission?
Any questions from commission members?
I know it's everybody in South.
It is. Anybody from the public?
I love it.
Where's our, uh, water guy? No, I don't think.
I think you wanna refer to you as the water.
I mean, the gentleman had all the questions, I'm sorry. I wouldn't refer to you as the water guy. It would be water and sewer. Yes?
Alec, go for thirty-five point three road, this might just be an understanding question, is that in any way related to the MS four program of the state?
Yes, I'll just track it, so I believe the MS four permit doesn't quite require you to have something on your zoning regulations, but strongly encourages you, it will help us, you know, achieve what we're trying to achieve with the MS four permit, um, the part that's gonna help us directly is the reduction of directly connected impervious area, so we're asking the applicant to give us that number, instead of us having to figure it out ourselves, and that's something that we do have to track going forward, the new permit, I think, is up next year, so we'll see what those requirements bring, but, it'll kind of bring us up to speed for that.
As, as a follow-up, if I may, I was looking at the, um, CTD, I think, website, and I noticed that, at least from what I could find, um, there was no data on exactly that portion of the muddy river. I think they, they have either appropriate for aquatic use or aquatic life, recreational use, I think, or aquatic life, and for the muddy river section, there was no data available, so I'm just curious, um, this is our drinking water again, why don't we have data?
I think that's CTD that collects the data, um, it wouldn't be the town that collects the data. Right, Neil, do you have any direct relation to CTD?
I think it was thought, I might be wrong, either you or Mr. Beltrami, submits the data to CTD?
I certainly do not. I don't know public works with either, maybe it was in this communication, but maybe if you send me the link, I could take a look at it tomorrow, like I will.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Kevin's rested now, so.
How much longer do you wanna go for?
Well, I think we wanna go into now the, uh.
I mean, we're kinda, yeah.
I, I think.
We're there.
Yeah, we're coming, so I think we wanna put everything.
Keep it going.
Train's rolling.
Keep it going, baseball game's almost over, so don't worry about it. I'm good to go.
A lot of game.
Uh, so, this is the watershed protection overlay district, um, some of the existing language is the same, a lot of it's different, uh, so this is an overlay district which provides for additional condition standards and safeguards to the permitted uses of the underlying district, uh, in order to maintain surface waters of longer area than South Central Connecticut.
And that's, so there's many different watershed protection overlay districts, you saw it was clear, it's all of this, and it's a lot of over here as well. And so, a lot of, just to kind of clarify, I know there was a little confusion about this, in December of twenty twenty, the last regulations that were before the commission, um, they included information that really belonged in the general stormwater management section, so we moved a lot of that with coordination with the water division to the stormwater management section, and then this is more of just the above and beyond measures that wouldn't be appropriate for every section, or every zone, I should say, within the town. This is specific for the watershed protection overlay districts.
Uh, so the, essentially, the treatment train that was in the existing language is, uh, roughly the same, um, I believe the water and sewer division just sort of tweaked their, uh, requirements in that section, I can't speak to, you know, their technical language, but.
Yeah, essentially, it's the same, they have a very specific treatment train, they wanna see a diversion structure that diverts up to a twenty-five degree storm, to an oil-water grit separator, and to a filtration basin, which is typically a sand filter, so, um, that's remaining the same as outlined here, because it's really only appropriate in the watershed protection district.
Yep, and we added just some language, so prior to the commission acting on the application, a review of projects located within this overlay district shall be completed by the long-term water division, and comments and recommendations submitted to the commission, uh, so the water division has to, uh, do a thorough review of any project, uh, before the commission can act on the application, that's all that means. And this is the buffer I mentioned before, a minimum one hundred foot buffer must be maintained between any surface waters, wetlands, and the developed land area located, uh, in the watershed protection districts. This buffer shall be measured from the edge of the surface water or, or from the edge of its directly adjacent wetland, whichever provides a greater area of non-disturbance, and applicants are encouraged to exceed the minimum drainage standard set forth in the stormwater management requirements, so that's section four point one two, uh, to increase the positive impacts in flood prone, flood prone and public drinking water supply areas, and proposed stormwater management plans have to conform to the technical guidance and procedures, uh, of the Department of Public Health, general construction investment practices for sites within a public drinking water supply area. And, uh, as far as the operation maintenance plans within the water protection district, property owners within this just overlay district shall allow the commission and agents and town block for reasonable access to the site for inspection purposes, uh, to ensure the owner properly maintains and operates the stormwater management and treatment system, um, and they would take, periodically take samples, and determine when repairs, maintenance, and replacement of the treatment system components are necessary. And then landscaping, we added this section, uh, this was more of a stormwater management friendly landscaping, uh, it requires curveless islands, um, anything, uh, seventy-five percent of the minimum required open space, standings of WI, uh, undisturbed natural made land, and then landscaping within parking lots, we expanded to include, uh, more stormwater management friendly, uh, requirements.
Here's another seven percent.
Yep. Yep, so basically, just, yeah, depressed islands without curving, um, just more, more green spaces within parking lots, essentially. And so, lot treatment also, uh, no parking lot containing more than ten spaces shall be treated with sodium chloride for ice control into parking spaces, drive aisles, driveways, and then also, the maximum number of permitted parking spaces, uh, shall be a hundred and twenty percent of the parking requirements within this district, um, and stormwater management systems in parking lots shall be designed in accordance with the Connecticut Stormwater Manual. And the general construction best management practices for sites within a public drinking water supply. So that's new language. We added that document in there as well.
And the 120%, so that is a repeat to the W I zone, but because we wanted it to be applicable to the whole community.
Yeah, so these are just extra general standards, just to increase water quality and quantity measures.
That's ridiculous.
And then sidewalk treatment as well. Sodium chloride should not be applied to sidewalks or other impervious blockways in the overlay. And then storage containers, the language didn't change much. We just updated some of the, uh, the years as far as the documents are concerned.
Yeah, this is pretty much exactly as recommended by the water division back in 2020.
Then we did add, this is new language as well. So any special permit use in the watershed, this is just new language, is saying that the commission will consider potentially impact to the watershed based on the specificity of the proposal, including but not limited to the amount of impervious area for minimization of parking loading spaces as practical, cohesiveness of open space area, maintenance of open space area in its natural state opposed to lawn development, the proposed stormwater treatment system, and the proposed parking area sidewalk treatment for the winter. And it allows the commission to include conditions of approval that it deems necessary in order to best protect the watershed in addition to the requirements of this section.
Yeah.
I guess I just, one question, just on B1B as far as the treatment. You know, that initially, I think in prior, uh, regulation, it was a half inch to, you know, an inch. Now it's just an inch. The reason for that change?
Yeah, that was, uh, so one inch is a general measurement for first flush. Um, and so the water division wanted it to specifically relate to one inch, the first inch of rainfall over the impervious area. So, um, you know, studies have shown that that first inch has the floatables, has the sand, has the oils, and that's what we really want to target for treatment because anything after that first flush is now basically running over clean, um, you know, parking lot, and we can kind of discharge accordingly.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Yeah, my questions were on page five. On page five, it's number four. It's the very last sentence of number four. It says, "More elaborate electronic systems," well, more elaborate electronic systems will be acceptable. My, my suggestion is that we be specific. And I know technology changes so much, but the idea that we want them to do monitoring is great, but that is just too vague. And then I, you know, because it sucks about a simple flexible dipstick is capable, but there's been so many changes in that space. And then my last comment, so the very last paragraph, um, and Kevin, you referenced to it, section G, special permit uses.
Yes.
This should be cleaned up to say something to the effect of, like the gentleman in the back of the room, "The commission relies on water and sewer to give us suggested conditions." Because here, I'm reading it says, "A commission shall consider," but we're doing it because we make all applications, we solicit department comments. So either it says in conjunction with plenty of zones, the water department might be, because a lot of, if I'm not, if I'm correct, Mr. Chairman, a lot of applicants work directly with water and sewer.
Yep.
Before they show up at town hall, say, "We're ready to, we're ready to present our thing." So a lot of work happens with staff. This doesn't best reflect the fact that we rely on the water and sewer division to do that. So I'm just suggesting, I think it's great, but it needs to be expanded to be clear it's not just the commission that requires this because, you know.
We'll take a look and follow up with you if we can't achieve that. We've had a lot of conversations about how the zoning regulations can't necessarily give the water division powers, and so we could, but we'll, we'll try to refine it and get back with you if, you know, we run into a roadblock, but.
And then the other question, I know, I know it's late. It only says special permit uses. And procedurally, we solicit water and sewer comments on everything.
Right.
We can require a special permit, but we've come a request on permitted uses, you know, like, and I, you know, I know water and sewer's been sitting in the back of the room all night, but I don't know if they have any other comments in relation to that because I don't know if they just say that the big guns for special permits because we get comments from water and sewer. The water, the water supply for this town is very important. This is nice to memorialize it. I'm sorry, this is the closer. It's nice to memorialize it here, but I just think it's more than just a special permit.
I, I thought we included that as well.
B1C.
B1.
Bingo. It's not my battleship. Other, okay.
The point of the last paragraph is really when there is a special use, and I appreciate the comment for us, for the water division to provide guidance, but it was really just a call out as well. If it's a special use and above and beyond, let's measure twice and cut once.
Yep.
That's, that was the intent of that paragraph.
As I said, I like it. I just think it needs to be extended further because, you know, I've never met Eric Ruder, but he's pretty important. I have no idea what he looks like, but man, he.
And you're right.
He's got a lot of power.
That's right. We see his signature.
I'm afraid of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission members? Members of the public? Yes?
I'm like 435 33rd Road. One, from my understanding, any existing use will be grandfathered in.
So what's that?
Any current existing use will be grandfathered in.
Yeah, so this, the watershed protection issue doesn't really, uh, yeah, it doesn't really describe uses. It's more the underlying zone that way.
Right, right. I just, I just noticed today that, for example, the bus depot is in that zone, which is basically 90% impervious surface.
Yeah, if it would take out that use, it would be not informing, you know, as, as it would go, you know.
And then, I mean, it's speed at work.
Yeah.
So if the payment process is, it couldn't be expanded upon without a variance. Is that true?
Correct, yeah.
And I noticed that because I didn't read through the entire thing. Monitoring and enforcement is taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
That says the operation maintenance plan, uh, as well as this requires, we have two, what, two visits each of them?
Yeah.
And is that falling all on the water division? Or does the applicant or former?
They have their own paths to inspect probably, too, but if they need assistance, then we'll do that.
Because I think it's, it's also a manpower and financial for the people who want to give us. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
Just Barry Musinski, 188 South Cherry Street. I just want to ask if there is a requirement that travels with the records, land records, to maintain the subsurface and the basin systems. I, I have seen when I've gone to other sites in other towns where the system was put in and then it was not maintained, it filled up with the material, and the owner never cleaned it out again. So then it failed to work.
So not currently, but the stormwater management section 4.12 does require violation of land records.
Okay, well, is the maintenance part of the whole track with?
Yes, it's an operations and maintenance manual. So for instance, if the system requires cleaning out the catch basin spicy air, then there'll be a notice of, uh, operation maintenance manual that would then require them to go look at that and abide by that.
Okay, that's good. That confirms the states or something.
Definitely. We've seen it too often. Thank you.
Mr. Mike?
Thank you. This is something that was actually just brought up by Jim here. So, no, but my question is this. What's, if somebody violates or fails to maintain, um, you know, one of these maintenance plans or abide by the maintenance plan, what's the enforcement mechanism?
He's on a foundation?
It would just be a zoning violation, yeah. I don't know if there's any real, uh, finding powers written in there at all, but it's a good, it's a good point to bring up.
It's not my point. It's, uh.
That's a very good point to bring up.
And then if it's something that needs to, I mean, if we have to go to court, we go to court on it. It may, someone that may overlay into the MS four area, I would think, and then we have obligations to take affirmative action under that also. So, you know, is it a perfect system? Absolutely not. It's not.
Yeah, and that was, and is there a, would there be a private clause of action as well for a budding landowner, or is it just primarily a town enforcement?
I would say that the individuals would be in a fighting, catch.
Cause damn, there'd have to be some harm. You know, I don't know, I mean, maybe in a butter has a private usage case, I, you know, it would really probably depend on the facts of the case.
Yeah, no, I, fair enough. I just, I just want to make sure that there's some sort of enforcement back in. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
So we think the next was the, um, the table, which has been discussed quite a bit, but happy to take another look. There you are.
Anyone, any questions on the table? I think we've probably discussed all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to our last and final, I believe. Side story.
Um, street party. So we think you kind of alluded to it before.
Uh, so as far as the Public Act 2129 has passed, the commission can opt out of the requirements, uh, I believe it's before January 2023, but then they require all single-family dwelling units to have one space, two-family dwelling units to have two spaces, three-family to have two spaces. So this is just something that the commission can opt out, uh, if they desire, one, two, three vote. So we can discuss that at a later time. Hotels, motels, uh, we got rid of the gross floor area, rental banquet area, one space for each 50 square feet of gross floor area, nightclub around area. We just changed it to customer seating, standing, dancing area. We didn't think that was applicable anymore. Manufacturing, we changed it from one space for each 500 to one space for each 1,000 square feet.
I, I think we should add that a lot of this is driven from the parking gen.
Parking gen, correct.
Yes, we didn't pick it up. But it is seeming to go in the direction of less parking required, which is encouraging for our W I zone where we're capping at 120% of the minimum required.
Yeah, we're changing one space for each employee to one space for each 3500 square feet of gross floor area per the parking manual. And research and development, parking manuals recommended one space for each 1,000 square feet instead of 400 square feet of gross floor area. Parcel sorting and retail distribution, uh, we sort of looked at numbers from around the country for these types of uses. We decided one parking space for each 1,500 square feet of gross floor area and one of that parking spaces for retail delivery vehicles stored on site would be an appropriate number, just from some data that we compiled, because there was no, there was no, you know, use in the parking manual for that, or, yeah, no use in the parking manual as of yet. Data centers, we have one parking space for each employee at peak shift. That was a general parking requirement through a bunch of number of different zoning.
Yeah, and there seems to not be a direct correlation between the amount of employees and the size of the building, so we thought it was less appropriate to make it square footage of the building and more appropriate just number of employees.
Indoor recreation facility, we looked at parking manual, we looked at uses in the area, and we came up with one parking space for each 700 square feet of gross floor area would be an appropriate number for that type of use. And other uses not listed, but it's the same.
Yeah, my comment is just with the first one, uh, you know, single-family dwelling units and that. And as far as, you know, with Public Act 2129, that's effective currently, so if someone came in and fall under that, or when does that become effective?
I believe you have until, I could be wrong, January 2023.
Okay, so we have plenty of time on that because, again, when I'm looking at this single-family dwelling, you know, one space, I think most of us realize that.
Yeah.
There's probably more likely, not that I'm saying we should increase to the three spaces, but I suspect that, you know, it's, I'm just looking at these, so I think that's something that certainly, you know, later they can want to look at, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to include these, you know, so we could take them out for now, we could still leave there.
Yeah, that would be, and some of the other, you know, the other reductions I don't have an issue with, but it was just this one right here.
So we should take it out for now, the changes?
I would suggest, I assume other commission members probably feel the same way.
Yeah, you really should be that, yeah. You should be that long enough to make a decision.
Yeah.
Right.
Anyone, any commission members? Members of the public, any comments? Yes?
I just want to say that 25 36, I've been coming to these meetings. This has been the best presentation. You guys did a lot of work in a relatively short period of time, and I want to commend you on it. I mean, as I said before, we've had these meetings, I think you said the record company was 212, is where you took the verbiage from, 2012? Okay? We had four, five, uh, IX and I5 workshops prior to that, and probably 28, 25, whatever. So, you know, people think this was overnight. Things aren't that way, you know. You guys covered a lot of ground. Whether or not we agree with it all, we'll talk later, but I think you did a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. After all those comments, name an address.
John Ger, Economic Development Commission.
Thank you. Any other comments, uh, from commission members, from the public? Again, I would just like to, you know, certainly thank our engineering department, our planning department, for all the work they put into it. Certainly, this is, this is not, not the end. We certainly intend to have, you know, one, perhaps two more workshops on it, so we certainly appreciate the, you know, the public coming out and voicing their comments. I think we'll, you know, just want to make clear that, you know, the commission doesn't have deaf ears. We certainly appreciate the comments that are made by the, made by the public. We're looking to have, consider those comments and as, as we look to revise or, I won't say improve the regulations, but make changes to this, so we certainly appreciate the comments. I'm sure that some people may feel that we don't, oh, stop it. Certainly appreciate the, the public coming out and appreciate all the commission members being here. And Mr. Amwick, I know, uh, we certainly appreciate you coming here. I hope we didn't tie up too much of your time. And.
Thank you for being here.
And Attorney Small, again, thank you.
Yes.
So with that, I then attend a motion to adjourn. Some of, better second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close this thing.